Okay, so first on the agenda we have we have discussion presentation of Governor State University, Restorative Justice.
Yes, thank you. We've got Christina Syntek and Dr. Merrick, if you both would come up please. Both these fine individuals are from Governor State University. We've been working with them throughout the summer and up to now we were going to have this presentation about a month ago at the last county meeting, but due to time constraints we decided to have it at this time. So, Dr. Merrick, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, okay. Okay, thanks everyone. So Professor Syntek and Professor Psalm are actually the two experts on restorative justice. I think I got the ball rolling. So there was some discussion about whether or not to adopt restorative justice practices in the district. And I reached out to the superintendent and let him know that we do RJ in schools at our university. It's one of the areas actually that we focus on, is the only area that we're specialized in. And so I reached out at one level because I have kids in the district and want to see this implemented. But second of all, because there's really good evidence that it has positive impacts in schools. So, so one of the pieces of RJ is that it has to be voluntary and so I'm happy to work with any and all of you as this project moves forward for your input. We're trying to, one of the pieces that we need to do is to have better outreach and input from parents, community members, staff, teachers, and students too. So, Pos, Christina.
Okay, there's like a few slides that I have that we're gonna run over that just kind of go over what this collaboration is, what we're trying to do, what we're doing with the district, and really just what we're doing in this first year. Earlier... So the first question I like to answer is a lot of people are often confused as to what is restorative justice, what is it, what does it mean? And when we talk about restorative justice, we look at, looking at justice from a different perspective. Our typical way that we usually look at justice is more in a crime and punishment perspective, it's more punitive. So we usually look at a crime and then there is some kind of corresponding punishment that goes along with that crime. And that's usually how we see justice, we see behavior that we don't like, and this is how we can fix that, this is the punishment that's related to it. And that's how we fix it, that's how we show somebody that this behavior is not desirable. Restorative justice doesn't look at necessarily a crime and a punishment, a corresponding punishment. They more or less look at what harm has been caused by this behavior, by this action, and how can we repair that harm? So it's a different way of examining justice and how things can, and how things can work. So what we're, what I'm gonna do is kind of take a look from a theoretical perspective and move it down to the practical perspective so you guys can understand what it means, what does this mean to our district, what does this mean to us as parents? The basic pillars of restorative justice include assessing the harms and the needs. When there is behavior or an action that takes place, the first thing we need to figure out is what harm has been caused and what are the needs? How can we address that harm? With restorative justice, we also examine the obligations. Who's responsible for addressing that harm? Is it just the, I'll use a student as an example, is it just the student? Is it the student and the teacher? Is it everybody, is it everybody in the classroom? Who, how does that harm affect everybody and how can we, how can we fix that? The final pillar of restorative justice includes engagement, which means being actively involved. Our typical peer system, what we usually see is an offender and a victim, right? And then a crime happens, the victim is not really involved in the process, the offender's not really that involved in the process either. And in school likewise, when a student does something bad or undesirable, they get a punishment. But there's no real involvement aside from kind of acting out or fulfilling that punishment. But with restorative justice, we ask for active engagement, where more people are involved. So the student is involved in assessing the situation. They have to think about who it is that they harmed and how they can make that right again. So it points to a lot of personal responsibility. In addition to that, the whole community can be engaged as well. So it's a very inclusive process. So how can we understand this in terms of the practical setting? What does this mean to me? Well, I just kind of compared what the traditional approach is to what a more restorative approach would look like. And I'll just kind of read through these if you don't mind. The school rules are broken in the traditional approach because we're more concerned about rule breaking and that corresponding punishment. But in the restorative approach, we're looking at people and relationships and how those things might be affected or harmed. Justice focuses on establishing guilt, but in the restorative approach, justice identifies the needs and the responsibilities of those people that are involved. Accountability equals punishment in the traditional approach. But in restorative justice, accountability is equated more to understanding impact and repairing the harm. Justice directed at the offender and the victim is typically ignored, ignored I'm sorry, in our traditional approach. But in a restorative approach, everybody's involved, it's a very inclusive process. So the offender, the victim, the school, everyone has a more direct role in the justice process. The final two, rules intend outweigh whether the outcome is positive or negative. And in the restorative approach, the offender is responsible for harmful behavior, repairing the harm and working towards positive outcomes. So it's a real positive way to view what can be typically negative situation. Limited opportunity for expressing remorse or making amends, that's a huge part of restorative justice is that there's a lot of opportunity given to everybody to make amends and express remorse. Again, that component of personal responsibility. So what the district is attempting to do, what we're planning on doing is in our first year, well first I must make mention that typical districts, school districts all over, all over the United States, when they, a lot of them are already or wanting to implement a restorative approach in their discipline policy or their discipline policies. So at district-wide implementation of restorative justice is not something that happens overnight. It's usually a three to five-year plan, sometimes can be longer, sometimes can be shorter based on that district's needs, based on, you know, the people that it serves. Our initial goal is just to focus on restorative justice principles and practices and increase the use of a few specific restorative justice practices in the schools. And obviously, we are hoping that this will lead to also increasing safety in our schools. The main focus is on relationship building, okay? Making and establishing those relationships so people can work together. The expectations are that the students will be engaged in talking circles. The ideal goal is to have at least one per week in every classroom. We're also going to be participating by reviewing the data, and I'll get to that in just a moment. There's a lot of, been a lot of talk about data this evening. Another component of this collaboration is that it's teaching social emotional skills. Some things that are already in place in the classroom or with other programs, this is going to support those. So students in K through eight will be, like I had mentioned, involved in the process, involved in repairing that harm, establishing how they can do that. So their reasoning, they're figuring out, they're, you know, working together. So it's gonna highlight or complement very well the social emotional skills that are already being taught in the classroom. The measures, how are we going to measure this? How exactly are we going to say that this is successful or this implementation is moving forward and this is a good thing for our district? There are weekly fidelity checks when administrators come into the classroom and examine how often restorative practices are taking place, you know, if they are, that kind of stuff. There's also going to be, we're gonna take a look at the referrals and the interventions, how often, you know, the frequency of those things. We're expecting to see that those things will decrease with an increase of restorative practices. And then of course, we want to have student, staff, and community feedback. The community, staff, the students, the ones that are being affected by this the most, their input is of great value in this, in not just this first year, but as we move towards this. The activities include sessions for instructors, sessions for teachers, which will train them in restorative practices, talking circles. Like I had mentioned, we wanted to one circle per week. So prior to that, the teachers that have not yet been trained in restorative practices will need that added training. We are hoping to host some community events or talk more about restorative justice and get the community involved and up to date on what we're doing and obviously use their feedback and their involvement too. And then finally, the data collection piece as well. The evaluation, so far, has been a climate survey. And the climate survey is just, has been administered only to the teachers in the district so far as a kind of baseline measure. And none of it's been evaluated at this point. But the climate survey, we asked the teachers about the safety of the school, how well teachers and students get along, how often they work together, just to kind of get a baseline measurement of where our schools are at right now. We're hoping to also implement a similar survey to students, to community members as well, because we also like to get their feedback. The administrative data is the interventions, that kind of stuff. So that will help us a longer way trying to figure out if our restorative practices, I'm sorry, if those things are affected by these restorative practices. And ideally, we'd also like to do some staff and administrative interviews at the end of year one so that we can get those more insightful responses. The restorative climate survey elicits very, you know, likelihood scale questions, you would be strongly, you've already volunteered surveys like this before. But to get real detailed and insightful responses, we'd like to also conduct a few interviews with staff and administrators within the district. So what is the partnership? Why is GSU here? What are they doing? It's a very collaborative partnership, a very collaborative engagement. We worked together so far on developing the survey. The survey was not something that was solely developed by us, although we've had experience working with schools and retention centers, other facilities that are implementing restorative justice using the same type of approach, using the climate surveys, the administrative data. So we had a survey that we reevaluated and reworked to work for our, to work for the district. And in addition to that, we worked with the superintendent and some principals developing some World Cafe questions that the teachers were engaged in during their back to, their first back to school in-service meeting. There's other community partners that would like to be a part of this. Illinois Balance Restorative Justice is our statewide restorative justice advocate. We have people that work for IBarge that are also living in this community and around this community, so it would be great to get them involved as well. The role of GSU is to deliver the FIU sessions that are specific to restorative justice theory and restorative justice practices, things that we already do. We're also responsible for the evaluation and the year one, evaluation of the first year, and we're also delivering a report to the district as well. And then we're also engaging or assisting with the organization of the restorative justice activities, like the community events and things like that, that we think are really a big part of this relationship building year one. The role of the district, partner with GSU, what do we do with GSU? Assessing this continuous improvement cycle, additional training on talking circles and peer mediation, another restorative justice practice that might be helpful in some of the schools. And then exploring other interventions that are also restorative, their approach, like care rooms or peer juries. Do I have time to show this or no? I don't have to. This is just an example of a circle that has been done here in the district to show you guys, to show everybody what a restorative circle looks like. And some of your children might already be engaged in this type of activity anyway, but if I have the time, I won't show up, but I have, so.
You know what, we actually had a very interesting discipline committee today where we did actually see a video of some of those things in play and counting all the number of kids in there, so I'm wondering if it would be like fifteen kids and we go through and say, but maybe you could just describe briefly in terms of, well, what does it look like?
Um, and this, I'll tell you what happens in this short video, I think, ah, it's maybe like seven minutes. In this talking circle, the teacher go, the teacher explains the children what the guidelines are and that whoever is holding this talking piece in this particular classroom is a talking stick. Whoever's holding this talking stick is the person that is able to speak. But everyone will have an opportunity to speak and the talking stick is passed around to everybody. But usually the talking circle will start, it's usually very ceremonial where they start with a sound, a gong or something like that, and a poem, something to get everyone to calm, calm themselves. And then they usually do some kind of check-in where they'll ask a very simple question. In this teacher's circle, she asked, "Give me one word that explains the best part of your weekend," just one word. And the talking stick is passed among everybody in the classroom and they might say basketball, football, party, something like that. And she said, "This is great because maybe later on when I see, I can ask you more about that and I can learn more about your great weekend." And then they go into more in-depth questions. But the talking circle in, is ideally used right now just for relationship building, not solving big problems here. They're not talking about tragic events or anything like that, it's just a way to build relationships. And so we'll go through and allow everyone to talk through there. It's a place where the students can come to feel safe, to feel comfortable. They have other guidelines and rules that they'll say, okay, what we say here is, you know, we're not gonna spread rumors about anybody else, it's gonna be confidential. You can come here and feel comfortable that you can say something. They, they might address concern, or they might address friendship. What does friendship mean to you? What does it look like to you? What does working together mean to you? Questions like that. So it's nothing very threatening or controversial. But still has an impact because you can learn about a lot from the other students in the classroom with those types of questions.
Well, I was gonna say, just by me, one of the things you also discussed earlier in the committee related to this was that it's not necessarily usually exclusive to contentary learning. One of the things that, you know, in English they're always saying, okay, you know, try to connect with the students and have them, you know, find a similar experience. And so it doesn't necessarily have to be something that is, okay, we're doing this thing, it's living in its own isolation, and then we're gonna have them understand it. It's something that can be done as an integrated part of our curriculum.
Right, and as, and as districts become more comfortable with it, comfortable with the practices and expanding their practices, it can be used to solve conflicts more peacefully. It can be used for other things, other ways of approaching unwanted behavior. And it's done in a much more peaceful manner, it's also done in a much more reflective manner. End of the, and it's also done in a way in which anyone that's been affected by it can come to the table, can be included in that conversation. So it's not looking at undesirable behavior, as you did this wrong, here's the corresponding punishment. So it's a different way to examine that. So some of the research that I've done indicates that talking circles, peer mediation, care rooms, things like that have been extremely helpful for students to be able to build these relationships, to be able to solve their own conflicts more peacefully, to develop those social emotional skills that we really want and want to see in our young people. And then because of that, they are open to more learning. And some districts and some schools have shown that students can have improved test scores over time with more restorative practices. Now linking those two, I'm just saying some people have had that type of result.
I had written down, we're talking about goals initially, helping remember this, so I appreciate the slides about year one measurement. What my question is, Marla, is probably pretty, maybe not very adjusted together. Are we looking at specific measurable that we can look at, like a decrease in referrals to the, by X percent? Physical altercation in the school, decrease by X percent, when we be able to see that data? And I ask that because we've had things up there and when the question that we started not just with this, but we put out a lot of things, we said we're gonna measure it, and then it starts to feel good, we're gonna see a decrease, we're gonna see a decrease, but are we looking for a more tangible, did this truly make a difference? Did we actually have a goal that we're trying to reach? We don't need to reach it, it's something for us to look at, but I haven't looked at that hard data.
Yeah. I have, we have not established the percent that we want to see. It has not been established.
And then so Pos, question for you, when are we gonna establish that percent and will we be able to see it?
Right, well, we are still in discussion about that. What we're talking about now is that we want to see a decrease in it because we really need to take a look at our interventions that are being implemented. We have a P circle, etc., so we're discussing that and hopefully there would be a hopeful percentage, we just have, we might have a discussion at this point.
So we're gonna spend money and time and energy with this relationship and so the question, what's gonna come back once again? Now that we just told, we're gonna ask somebody that, there's an expectation that they're implementing something, that we will be able to see a very specific end to, you know, a practice that we all hear about what it is, a talking circle, of that, that tangible piece. Because the questions are around whether or not we have circles, which is great, right? The end is, the circles do something, and that is decrease in physical altercation or positive perception about, of positive experience from students. So that's, so that's one. And I, and I don't have more of a question.
Can you, can I just briefly respond to that? In the work that I've done, I have not seen great decreases, okay? It takes time to build this perspective and build, and build this practice. So at the end of year one, I, at the end of year one, you'll, you'll very likely see decrease, but if you're looking for a very drastic drop off?
No, not looking for that, I'm asking that we didn't have something.
Just have primary numbers.
We do this and then something increases, that's something we can look at.
Sure, and that's part of my report when I, that's, that's part of my, part of my report is to deliver that and I always have.
Thank you. The second part to it is that you chose a great survey that you gave to teachers and, it's teacher-led administration, and then you said that you're gonna build something similar for students and community feedback. What I'm asking them is, is the data from students and community feedback going to be incorporated in the baseline information as well?
Yes.
Okay. And when is, what is that?
I'm working on the development of the two surveys right now. The surveys have some similar questions, purposefully, but obviously the student survey can't be used long as, so, yeah, so there's a few.
So, can I ask, we're in October now, so we're developing now, is this something I've been hoping to see in the next month or so, so as?
Oh, absolutely, we just had a conversation the other day about that. Thank you.
Good question, if you don't mind. So, and I think this is a good survey. However, is there a component where the teachers are participating and what kinds of questions are they think are important to ask? Or is this something that is really coming from your expertise in this area?
A little from column A, a little from column B. The, the survey was something that we use as, we use as skeletons. And then I worked with the principals and your superintendent to make it tailored towards this whole district. So I would say more of the students have input and less teachers have input. But that would be good to continue to develop the survey as we move forward with the implementation to have more teacher, more teacher input. Please.
I have a few questions. First, my first few questions are not specific to the program. So how, Dr. Dosser mentioned that you guys have met throughout the summer, how many times have you actually, can you talk us through sort of when this started and how many times you've actually met over the summer to discuss this program?
Doc Merrick, when did you, when did we meet?
I reached out, I reached out to the school district in spring and I and Dr. Psalm actually met with the administrators in spring. And we agreed to meet multiple times. I believe that that was three other occasions where we met in person to work our way through. But we did most of our work actually not in specific meetings, right? So we would do the work and then meet again, do the work and then meet again. So that, that's the way that we planned it over the, over the summer. And so I think four total meetings, if my memory serves me correctly.
So you've got four, four meetings with the district?
Yeah, I think so.
I know I have more.
Okay, and then, so do we have a contract? Are we planning to create a contract?
Yes.
So you've been working and planning year one without a contract?
Yep.
So when will there be a contract in place?
As soon as we solidify.
So when is that? When, when is year one starting? When does the clock start to ring?
Well, we already, we already started collecting data.
So you started working and thank you for working without a contract, but, so it's, I, I need to know, when will, when do you expect a contract to be solidified? Is there a cost factor that's a part of this? I mean, when, when will the board actually see that? Because we've been hearing about restorative justice and this potential partnership for a while now, so we had, this era just started, we're almost into October. So when will we have a contract?
Um, we also, I don't know, I haven't answered that, but um, we also talked about, she was, I was gonna say.
That's right. It's actually more of a question for Dr. Dosser.
When can we expect one soon?
And we expect a contract.
We're gonna have one, we have one within the next couple of weeks, maybe next year.
The last thing that we were working out was exactly how many FIU sessions were needed, how long, how long will train, how long can train, how long should train be? That was the last, that was the last question that we talked about. And what we're trying to do is figure out a way between, obviously, as many teachers trained as possible to the measure of the time that we have and once, not conditioned at the end of the year.
So has training started with the teachers?
Well, some of the teachers are already trained, some of your teachers are already trained in restorative, but nothing that we've delivered, we have not delivered any training, that's all.
So the teachers, so that, that was the question. So the teachers who have been trained in restorative justice, what school are they at?
What school are they at?
What school?
Um, we've got them all over the district.
So they're teachers at all five schools that have been trained?
We had studied last year, they were, were going through restorative justice practices. We have a principal who is very good at it, so Ms. Demetrovitz, and she has given examples of what it looks like and there's been practicing that's been taking place. Would you like to address that anymore, Ms. Demetrovitz, about our program that we had to do in your school review and chat?
I mean, nothing, anything different that Christina has said, I think it's a valuable, certainly intervention and an opportunity for kids to come together and, and talk and teach social skills, self-responsibility. I think it is about building relationships. We use the model, we've been using it since I started at Serena in talking circles in the morning. They start, every classroom starts in the morning with a talking circle and they end the day so that it's like a check-in, how do we start our day? We set the tone. A lot of our second step curriculum is taught in that circle, so we look how we, you know, integrate social emotional curriculum also with our PBIS incentives, so it's more universal and programmatic. We've had opportunities for other schools to come in and visit and see the circle. We had trained peer jurors, worked with our social worker and our, our PBIS tier two and tier three team to help that. And so kids hear from each other, it's dynamic, we've brought, you know, parents in. We are collecting data, we have seen measurable impact on our referrals, but, you know, we, we address conflict and, you know, talking circles, conflict resolution and problem solving is just one type of circle. You can have celebration circles, there's many different types. So if you're doing a problem-solving circle, the goal is to, to come out with a win-win for all parties involved and then help those situations stay resolved, not to see, you know, the same frequent flyers come in for the same, you know, kind of behavior. It has been highly successful. All of our staff went through an initial training given by myself and social worker. And so we speak a common language at Serena about restorative and what that looks like. So I think that we've done a really nice job and we're hoping that this will certainly catch fire and, and we can have some measurable impact at all levels.
Ms. Demetrovitz, can you tell about the teachers went over there during the ECC study that we, that took place or when teachers that were coming over? Chad, you may want to speak on that.
Sure. All of last year, ECC had opportunities to, it's a second curriculum committee and each building had representation on that. One of the responsibilities of those members were to go and either observe at Serena in classrooms or there's also some community restorative justice opportunities, and so the teachers went out and observed that. uh, and so the teachers went out and observed that. We also brought in some outside, um, schools that have been using restorative justice and restorative practices within their, um, approaches, uh, to behavior. And, uh, they were responsible in addition as committee members, uh, to report back to the larger faculties as a whole and have those conversations and faculty meetings. Uh, I can speak to my building that, uh, there were several of those, um, individuals who went out, as I said, to Serena and those, um, community events and came back and implemented. Uh, there were some restorative practices. Right now, they're, are they at the conflict resolution, um, process? No, but they are using circles for relationship building, uh, and then we've been using in the district for three years now, uh, so our social-emotional learning curriculum, second step. Uh, so that's in terms of process-wide where we're at. Also, as part of Thursday Institute Day, um, teachers, um, all teachers throughout the district, um, have, uh, a conversation starter and, um, some, some training on what theory is and what a little, what practice is like. A, a little bit more in-depth presentation that was here, um, is about, uh, a two-hour presentation.
Thank you. So, does that all equal, so I don't want to use the word training very loosely, and so since we're figuring to enter into a contract and start a program, will this program start at all of our schools? And has there been sufficient training offered, um, to teachers at all of our schools so that we can actually successfully implement this program? What I don't, we, what I'm fearful of is that, um, we will be flying the plane and reading the manual at the same time, and we've seen a lot of that over the years in the district, and so we don't want, I, I personally do not want to see that. So I'm very interested in, um, how much real training, not just attending, not just doing an observation, how much real training has been actually, you know, um, delivered to the teachers at each of the schools and how much more training do you think is actually needed? So I'm not expecting you to be able to answer that, but I'm saying, as we're getting ready to enter into the contract and now that it's October and the year, the clock is already starting to tick, it seems to me that there's still a whole lot of work that needs to be done on the front end before we can actually even see stuff that's measurable after a year more.
Right, and as an advocate of restorative justice, I think it's really important to make, to maintain integrity of the practice. So having one, two-hour training is not a basis, it's very likely not.
In your experience, what is a sufficient amount of training that would lead you to believe that you have teachers in the school that's ready?
Well, that's tough, because training and understanding what the practice is and going into mock circles is important, but the more you practice it, the better you become at it, obviously. Um, so, uh, geez, the training is usually, it's usually like two full days, you know, just an intro to restorative, uh, restorative justice and circles, it's usually like a two-day training. And then there's usually five mock circles and things like that, a lot of it.
And that's just for circles? That's not for all of the rest of the activities?
That's correct.
So are, so is the program that we are saying we plan to implement, will that include a variety of practices under restorative justice or just the circles?
Right now, just the circles is all that I have, um, been developing, collecting along. That would be a lot of what we're going to get done in, in the course of a year.
Would you say it's more of a coaching model than a one-done?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I, 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 okay, so my suggestion was to train the trainer. Um, in order to get the greatest impact for, you know, budget concerns, right, would be a, a train the trainer. Have one or two or three of your teachers, administrators, together, do the train the trainer, which is very, um, you know, it's, it's lengthy, but very detailed, and then they're qualified to train their staff in the practice. So we're offering a service, like, we can do this, right? Is this going to be the best for the district? We don't really know yet. If, if, if this model that we are proposing is going to be the best, because again, how many people have been trained, how many people still need training, and once we take a closer look at this and we see that, is this, we're not going to, we are not going to be able to accomplish this in the kind of, kind of time we want to, and that's something we've already discussed, was, okay, maybe a train and trainer option is going to be the best.
And this will be implemented in all of our schools? That the next?
Yes.
Correct. So based on your last comment, it sounds like it's highly, um, unlikely that a contract will be executed in the next couple of weeks, because it sounds like there are a lot of things still that need to be worked on.
I wouldn't say that. I think there's a really good handle on restorative justice, at least understanding restorative justice and being able to implement it. I mean, many, as I said, many of the schools are already doing it. So it's, uh, district is much further ahead than that is said about the, the business, which is, right. But I can give you an accurate answer on how many people have been trained, how many people still need training, what that time frame is going to be. Good question.
But it's just the circles that will be implemented?
Uh, yes, but for the more, but for the schools that are, um, excelling and that already have the training in it, we can offer additional training, incentive period deviation, um, conflict resolutions, things like that as well. I agree.
Um, you stated you all have been collecting, um, data from, from, from where? From what schools or from the teachers, from students?
For this project?
Yeah, for this project.
It's just been with, um, the, uh, staff, the teachers and administrators that were willing to take the survey on the teacher's day. So it was all in this, in this district.
Just in the division, in the prior division?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thomas? Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
That's in the agenda. We have the NWBA data report, Dr. Graham. Dr. Graham?
First of all, um, one, the board, at least when I was looking at the review, my, uh, my agenda notes at this weekend, there was no presentation that was listed on the agenda, that there was no kind of notes or anything for us to look at. Um, and then also, in meetings prior to this, I wonder if, I mean, you're the president, you're the board, you're on the agenda, but we're just, we were supposed to give information off of it during the meeting. On course, and not.
Dr. Doster? Yeah, Dr. Graham is our statistician and we pay for it to bring this information. He brings things together. We spoke to Mr. Freitas last week in regards to the presentation for Dr. Graham. As far as him not having information, um, it wasn't set on the packet, it's because it wasn't completed until this morning.
I have thought of Dr. Doster, we, we talked about this first of all, thank you. No disrespect to his presentation, but we have heard from you several times, and one of the things that we've talked about a lot is connecting the data and the judiciary and external experts and having, the presentations come from our administration to see that we have handled, and that's, that's the common, that's the conversation I'm out. Dr. Graham has been with us day-to-day, knowing what's happening and being able to lead the conversation, ask the data, is that she's gotten data, 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 and we are looking for data, act, data, actual results, and we're done. So that part of this, that is, it is something that we have asked for and has, and it just seems to be either ignored or, for some reason, we just not put there. Um, and then the fact that we actually had this, I was willing to listen to this, obviously we have it, but with this amount of information and the highlight on data and the information that we have, not giving us enough time for pair of appropriate questions or even thoughtful comments, is doing a disservice to our time and what we should be getting accomplished.
I, I have to agree. And this is such a huge, heavy issue that we've been talking about now for the past several years, and so to get, because I haven't even had time to open it up and locate it. And I know that I would have a lot of questions and comments, and so, and I agree with Ms. Harold, no disrespect to your presentation, and I agree with pulling it together, um, and today, I don't know whether or not, um, district staff have had the opportunity to really digest it and, and, and be okay with the data, but I think it's a disservice to the community and to, and to the discussion that's really, really needed to have on this. This is huge. And for the record, I actually did request that, all due respect to you, Dr. Graham, that Dr. Graham not be the person to deliver this. I ask for Dr. Doster to be able to deliver this.
Right, you would ask me that? Personally, this information for Dr. Graham putting this together is why we bring a statistician in to tell us exactly what's going on in regards to the information presented.
So we have no district staff who can help explain what's going on? What will be different? And again, I have not looked at it, I've been on the board for years, so I've seen the, the charts and the information you presented. I don't know if we need, we, we have NWBA charts, we can go onto Disney, we can find that data. What is it that Dr. Graham can do that we currently don't have the capacity in this building to be able to do?
Dr. Graham, you want to explain?
Okay, there, there are several things going on here. First of all, the work I've done before was benchmarking and fixing up the data from the state of Illinois in terms of the area, um, 161 in the other districts, that was the principal purpose of this number four. This is all that, this is the first time they've had information, you send a ton of trends, levels, then growth, aspects of it. I, I think it's good just to take a look at what's going on and give the presentation another time or start somewhere else. You get, that's not the issue. I'm here today, I think I can show you some very interesting information, which also has very actionable type of events at the end that I think will find you interesting.
So we don't have the capacity in this building to be able to analyze, to see that helps us understand what's really going on with the numbers?
We have the capacity to do that.
Okay, so if we go ahead with the presentation, this does not take place of a deeper conversation that's needed around data and how do we move forward and how do we help our students and we all, this, this does not take the place of that by any stretch of the imagination, this conversation should not be over.
Nobody said that.
So what would be the plan after this presentation that would allow us, as well as the community, to have a conversation about this with data?
What I would suggest is, I think we should see Dr. Graham's presentation and that, that might be a good question as a follow-up, but where do we go from here? So, um, at this time, I'm going to suggest, you know, fine, if it's okay for everybody, because we see the presentation.
We haven't seen it. It's a little, you haven't had a chance to look at any of the presentations, and told the crowd about it.
I, I, I understand that.
Around these decisions.
I understand.
Okay.
But at this time, our options are enable this or, um, we, or, or, you have the presentation and from there we make some decisions about where we want it. But Dr. Graham's here, and I think a lot of the passion is in this, so I appreciate that, um, as I think you're there in that. Um, but I understand the frustration, a little frustration with the problem.
I don't know if you understand my frustration, but I, I.
Okay, so let's.
Okay, we're getting the assessment we're only talking about now. You look at the background in terms of demographic influences upon what just heard you say. Want to talk briefly about building on state board education, ISAT, HART, unscathed problems with and around Latin, uh, NWBA math, trends, levels, growth, I want to emphasize trends, our time series, looking at how things change. Levels are the RIB scores in Hawaii, and growth is individual growth of the performance of students that make achievement of overall summary. But go over and look at this. First of all, key demographics and influence upon student performance, limited English proficiency, low-income families, and mobility. All these have a fundamental effect on the effect of this on the student testing.
I'm sorry, can I, can you please explain that?
Watch it and you'll see.
Okay, we're beginning to be, that, that's, that's huge, and the fact that you are dealing with that?
And that's why I'm giving graphs out here.
Is, can you go back to that slide just so that I make sure that I can see? So, our limited English proficiency students, so those are our Hispanic students, our low-income, primarily our Hispanic and our African-American students, our mobility, probably the same category of, of individuals. Is that correct statement? Is, is that, is that, is that the population of people? I mean, it's, I, again, I haven't read this, but for you, for us to start out with the demographics of our, of the people who are a part of this district in terms of it being a negative influence is so profound. So please, I would, you can go on to the next slide, but I really need you to come back to that and help us understand how this is negative.
I'd like to talk to you about that afterwards.
No, 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 no.
A lot of the data, a lot of the interpretation, this is clearly not only clear by the district to have.
I, I, I understand that, but again, you're, you're leading with this and I'm already offending you. Okay?
Okay. If you take a look at what has happened to limited English proficiency over the past decade within the district, it's gone from less than one percent up to over four percent. That's a huge proportional increase. Low income from less than ten percent of the students to up to forty-five percent of the students, absolutely huge. Mobility, in the past five years, it's been a double mobility. You want to have stability, live in the classroom as much as you can for the students. Let's take a look at state of Illinois information. We have ISAT, which was around Latin in 2014, where it took a grade three to eight in reading in math and then science in four and seven. HART came in in 2015, covered reading in math and has been expanded this year. No child left behind, common core, number of those performance, four and five, different scale scores across the band, a high, high information that the state provides. The state board of education takes the raw scores, the version of the scale scores, then establishes cut score. The cut scores are where the levels and where the categories like E and C are derived. They measure reading, math, science, they use to measure writing, and the thing that the board does, where it's so important, is taking the scale scores and establishing the cut lines. The cut lines are absolute disaster. If you take a look at 2014, the category where they see in the state could be anything from twelve to twenty-five percent. You look at the HART scores, they could be from two to nine percent. They're very much inconsistent internally and between other categories. In 2014, the last year of ISAT, fifty-eight percent of the students in the state of Illinois were in the E and C category. Last year, 2015, only thirty-three percent. In one year, did the number of students diminish by fifty percent? Or is it just a classification of the categories? And that's what it was. If you take a look at, in 2012, the cut scores, at fifty-seven percent of the schools passing. The next year, they changed the cut scores and went down to six percent in schools. They changed the cut scores and raised the level of performance to his one point two in 2015, only one percent of the schools bettered. These are all decisions made by the state, so any time that you look, have the levels, the E and C, or the level five and four are completely misleading.
So I can't even find the cut scores, I'm not clear with that.
That's where the categories come in between, if you have an E and C category, there might be scores up to two oh five, if you may have it. Each one of the different categories.
Okay.
Okay? The IBS calculations are not objective, they are misleading, inconsistent, lackability to compare, inappropriate for time series analysis, and also a little waste of identifying the probable events. Now let's look at math. You want to look, and we have two categories, math and reading in math. And we're going to look at three things. We're going to look at trends, we're going to look at levels, which is the RIB score, and we're going to look at growth, which is a student-by-student improvement. This is first grade, and they only have to have two thousand thirteen, two thousand sixteen. The dotted line here is the math norm, and you'll notice the jump, because they changed the category in 2015. So there was a jump, but if you didn't just see a time series, that in this case, they're all moving up, all the students are moving up. Now, there was talk about. Now, there was talk about frequency distribution and density functions earlier. And you see the blue, that's the frequency distribution of all the scores in the district. Up here, for first grade math, one eighty point eight is the norm for math. That's by the national norms. And here you can see where each of the schools means fall. Of course, you can drill down and see the distribution for each one of the districts. So, and then you'll see how to the top right, you see that seventy-five point seven, that's the number of students that are above the math norm. Okay, a lot of information. We look at trend in second grade, see things moving up. You notice that Heather Hill is below the math norm. Here we see the density function.
I don't, don't mean to interrupt, but if you could go back one slide. So is that, is that the mean?
What?
Is that the mean math score?
Yeah, that's the average term math score.
Okay, so that includes the kids who didn't do well and the kids who did really well.
That's a time series. But if you take a look at the one before, it shows all of which ones did well, which ones didn't well. That's the whole universe.
Okay, and so within each bar, that is a mean for the school, correct?
No. Each bar represents the frequency of number of kids scoring between one eighty and one twenty. That's what that bar means.
Okay.
Okay, so frequency distribution of performance.
Are you going to show sub-group data?
I can do some...
As part of this presentation, given how you started, you've laid out very important issues that are obviously impacting...
I address an issue, well, not a sub-group system. I was given the data and quite frankly, it can work solidly literally twenty-four hours a day.
There is no doubt, there is no doubt that it's been working or it has several days on this.
I can do that for a big one. There we go, thank you. Okay, this is second grade, and you see sixty-seven percent of the schools exceed the math norm. And you can see which schools where they lay the vision. Third grade, you can see a slight positive trend in all the different schools, but you see again, Heather Hill's below the norm. Here you see the distribution, Heather Hill is below the norm in third grade. The other ones are fairly close together, just below the math norm. Here you see strong movement in math in fourth grade. Similar type of distribution in fourth grade. And here you see all of the schools are above the math norm and making progress in a positive direction, excuse, in a negative direction, which is a little distressing. You see all of them moving down or most of them moving down in the last quarter. Fifth grade, sixty-six percent, all above the math norm. Here you see sixth grade, where the levels are all below the math norm.
Dr. Graham, I appreciate all of your input, I really do. Could you slow down just a little bit, we can transitions to, because keep in mind, literally the board does not see this until...
I'm really saying...
I'm just not crazy. I'm only saying this as, do you...
I was just going to say it to you before, I really do.
I understand, but just so it gives us a little bit more time to process each slide. I don't want you to feel rushed at all, maybe that's a better way to put it.
Okay. Here is sixth grade, which shows only forty-four percent of the students beating. Keep in mind, they're also under the point of comparing to the norm. Here we have seventh grade, moving in a positive direction since 2013. And again, above the norm, which is good. Eighth grade, moving upward. And only fifty-one percent are beating. You're going to see a chart at the end which summarizes all these above and below percentages, where you can see where each of the schools' grades fall into it. We have similar type of information for reading. And I like to point out that there are three of the four schools in a negative direction. But all of them above the math norm. See that? The math norm is this line here, is the, these are moving down.
Okay, and just to clarify, this slight fluctuation in the dotted line that represents shift, has the old norms prior to 2015 and new norms?
The 2011 norm versus 2015, exactly. And here you can see a close relationship, again, over seventy percent of the students in first grade reading are exceeding the norm, the math norm. That's pretty good. And by the way, all the students are pretty close together. Second grade, you see a positive movement up with the exception of Heather Hill. And Heather Hill is moving below the norm. Second grade, reading, seventy-four percent of the students were above the norm. Again, seventy-four, that's, that's pretty good. And you see Heather Hill is just below, just below the norm. Third grade, all above the norm. Sixty-nine percent of the students are above, and all the schools are above. Again, we have a strong movement in fourth grade reading. All were above the norm, all have a positive slope. Fourth grade, you see seventy-three percent above the norm. Fifth grade, little more variation, but everyone's above the norm. Seventy-one percent of the students are above the norm in fifth grade reading. Sixth grade, they'll walk from two fifteen, two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. Sixty-five percent above the norm. Seventh grade, a strong positive movement, seventh grade, above the norm. You see a higher proportion, seventy-five percent of students above the norm. Eighth grade, moving up, again, over seventy percent above the norm. Now let's take a look at growth for a second. Now this is on student by student basis. And this, these numbers here represent the proportion of students that are beating or exceeding their targets, which are established by NWA. And here you can see things that jump out, like Redder, Earl, Fosse, and Spoons. Here you see a softness in second grade, with the seventh grade students may fail. So you see a wide variation of what's going on in math by grade by subject. Sixth grade jumps out because only seven percent of these students exceeded their goals in math.
Can I just clarify that there, there is a, a different platform of questions asked in NWA math between the third through fifth grade math test compared to the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math test? So that it's not the exact same test that my fifth grader will be taking than the sixth graders take?
That's correct.
So does that, having said that, is that...
NWA scales all the things according.
Right.
So you can make comparison between the two.
Right, okay.
And percentage of meeting targets is something you should be able to compare between grades and subjects because of the index that it does.
Okay, so would you say then it's fair to say that if kids are doing well in, in fifth grade, that they should be expected to meet certain birthmarks in sixth grade based on projections that NWA has?
NWA has projections that they make based by where they start. Where they should be on the national norm, that's what they do. Okay, so their norm is what they expect. The normal child would be shooting from point A to point B. So they set that up for every child and it varies by where they start. Okay, because the lower the score, there's more room to grow. And obviously, there's less room to grow and we're at the top of the line.
Right.
They do that in terms of their expectations of meeting and not meeting the targets. Okay, does that make sense? But in any case, when you see sixth grade with only fifteen percent of the league of students are meeting their targets, that's a concern.
I, not to, I appreciate that, but is, do we have any idea? I think this is more for something that's more proven, I have more to move forward into, you know, looking into this at a PLC level of buildings. Do, is there any sort of analysis of why we're seeing this trend? Because as memory serves from past presentations, we've seen this kind of dipping down in grade. And then, you know, later it seems to adjust itself.
The game plan for implementation of improvement is something that you're a minister to. I don't do that. I can only point to what I see issues that this needs to be addressed.
Okay, okay.
Then we play that reading, and there isn't quite as much variation, but just what happened in sixth grade, the things approved marginally in reading as compared to math. Now this shows overall the ten-year average by school in reading that does how well they have done. And you can see overall that the students are generally doing better in reading than in math in terms of meeting their target values. Keep in mind, this is the percentage of students that are meeting the target objectives set by NWA. But you can see that Heather Hill is down, that Harper is down about the same as Heather Hill. But you can see reading is stronger than math. Something should be done about math, to bring it up, obviously want to grow all areas, but there seems to be a weakness in all schools in math. So this is one of the trigger things that you want to address. This shows all the schools what they've done in trends. And remember, we're talking about three things, trends, levels, and growth. This is trends, this is over time. You can see which districts, which schools, and what grades are moving up. The green arrows means up, the horizontal one means staying about the same. That's where the trends in mathematics.
Okay, just to clarify, the sigma represents the...
The school.
Right, it says the overall...
Right, exactly. Then we see reading is a little bit more volatile. And clearly, you see first grade, some serious issues in terms of trends and improvement in that area. And you can see across Heather Hill, that's a lot of work to do in the line. You can see just by the error of where target areas should be in terms of where should be going, where... And this shows levels, now this is the RIB score, how they're doing. And this is above, all the pluses means above the norm, the math norm. The minus means below the math norm. Okay, so we're looking at trends, we're looking at the individual scores. And then we see that for reading, where Heather Hill in the second grade is the only one, below the math norm, less percent. Now this is growth. And I try to make this a little bit more informative because if you take a look at that's percent of students that are exceeding the norms, okay? The standard norms in mathematics. If it's green, it means it's trending upward, it's getting better. If it's black, it means it's about to say. And if it's red, it means it's going downward, which is kind of more neutral. Same thing for reading. Now let's point out that here we have Harper Junior High, where they're doing even better in math than seventh and eighth, but then we have a softness in negative trends. We're above all junior high.
Just, can you go to the last slide, I just want to make sure I understand. Is that the reading? So if I'm reading this correctly, I just said the Harper, sixty-four percent of the students are, excuse me, I sent it wrong, at Harper Junior, sixty-four percent.
You're real quick.
No, 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 and I'm really not being funny, I'm trying to, you were put into an awkward situation, so I figured your defensiveness kind of asking that in advance, why? These questions, I would like to digest before you got here. So the questions I'm asking are actually real questions because...
I have to be more...
Right, so sixty-four percent of Harper Junior High sixth graders, could you, the sentence?
Exceeded the math norms in reading.
Okay, exceeded the math norms in reading, okay, but this is important. That means it's gone up, so the year before, they were higher and now...
Or the previous, I think the previous one.
Trying to, so there's trending down.
Right.
And sixty-four percent, which means that about thirty-six percent did not. Right, okay, so then sixty-three percent of our seventh graders, fifty-five percent of our eighth graders have never exceeded their, the norms, and it is trending down. And that is the biggest takeaway, because there's a lot, a lot going on in a lot of these demographics. So this one is my number, so...
This is a new year to a school station. And thirty-one of our very high performance students, these, that's what I think that math does a good job of, is saying, what should the child be doing? So, and that's what the state of Illinois was trying to do with its levels and categories, but they did it in a very unsuccessful way. But these are comparable, best for beauty of math, but these numbers aren't girls.
And the difference changes on black, it's just, it makes kind of like the same with black over the last color.
Oh, I didn't put the colors.
You didn't put the colors.
Yeah, they're all pretty neutral.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any sense?
Yep.
And do we have a, is there a norm by which you would say typically most schools across America or in our, you know, our set of schools that we've been looking at?
Yes, you can tell me whether it is. And I'm not going to tell me whether it is. Yes, you can, think about it for a second. It's the norm, it's the average of all in the nation.
Yes, I get that.
So the norm is fifty percent.
Oh, okay.
Right?
In terms of this, the...
It's a regular equation.
Okay, but does math have a, you know, a guide that they say you should expect that fifty percent?
No, they don't, they don't, they say each child has this target. I have to do the calculation, which ones meet and don't meet the expectations. That's where those numbers come from.
Okay, so there is no specific growth norms that they have?
Not that I can see.
Okay.
So in this particular chart, we've taken six years plus growth in averaging per building, per grade. How's going to fall to spring? Spring is spring, spring is spring.
So they're cohorts?
No, they're not cohorts.
So, okay, so...
That's another.
Maybe this is a kind of a question, so looking at Fosse Mills, under one, it says sixty. Is this the same group, the next year they get sixty-two, and then the year after that they get sixty?
No, no. So whomever was in this in 2016, who was in first grade, who was in second, who was in third, and a lot? Cohorts are definitely what you would think. Who was in first last year, how many were in second this year?
Okay, so this is entirely based on spring sixteen?
Spring sixteen, spring sixteen through this year, yes.
Well, why is it better to compare spring over spring in terms of growth versus testing the same students from fall when they begin the school term to spring when they end the school term?
There's, this isn't better, it's what happens if they need to do what you can do there.
But we have, they test in the fall, so we have...
This year they have the fall, there's that in history.
In this district, we're testing in the fall and the spring for many, a lot of the... Now, we were retimed, so we have the data. Especially since statistically, students do drop off when they take that fall order because of the summer, and so we have the data, so we should be using it.
Michelle, we looked at spring and spring because of that regression that takes place with the summer. If we did fall to spring, the numbers would grow tremendously. So what we want to do is want to take a look at spring and spring to see how the kids are growing. That's what our teachers are willing to, teams report out.
So I was looking for kind of kind of a year... So I was looking for kind of kind of a year growth. Okay, so within the course of one year, you're looking at, what is the difference between this one kid and the entire year later?
Right.
Is that the way in which the math norms are also here, this spring over spring?
They give them each the categories, they have fall, this spring, winter, this spring, this spring. They have fall, right here, they don't use... What we see, reading trends, first fifth and sixth, you have improvement, math trends, Parker Junior High. Overall, the performance of those at Heather Hill, he worked overall, and especially then sixth grade, saw how those fell down in all areas. Broke at Heather Hill and Parker, neither. But it's still remarkable achievement, in light of the unfavorable demographics, limited proficiency, lower ability. The past I built models and then incorporated all this, and say, where should you expect to be? Those approve, we better reply, but they don't do that until I have the information from the state of Illinois.
So, I'm sorry, remarkable achievements in light of unfavorable demographics? Is that not an offensive statement?
Yes, that is.
It's... It's an excuse. So in light of the fact that we have low income minorities who have limited English, we've been able to still do okay?
Is that remarkable?
No, that is an offensive statement. That is so incredibly offensive, in light of the fact that we have poor people and Hispanic people in our district, guess what, we've still been able to do okay. That is offensive, I cannot believe that you approved that statement. I am so offended of that statement, I'm offended of that, and I'm offended of the way this presentation started. You're talking about black, and brown, poor people, as if we is at the demise of this community. We, we've been able to succeed even though we've got this unfavorable demographic that's now a part of our district. That's not how we talk about our students, that's not how we talk about our district. I cannot believe that you approve this.
This is not how we talk about students.
I am so offended right now.
Students, period.
This is ridiculous. What is, what's the achievement gap? You make a point, you both make a point of approving this to highlight at the beginning and the end that we have a demographic shift. What is our achievement gap in this district? Show me how African American and Hispanic students are doing against all the other populations, what is our achievement gap? I specifically asked for that question when I sent you that email. What is our achievement gap? And has the achievement gap grown under your watch?
What are we doing about it?
We have over a hundred thousand dollars sitting in our Title I, specifically to deal with the population that are unfavorable, but we can't figure out as a district how to support these students. But you highlighted here, so tell me, please, what the achievement gap is, and I can't wait to hear your presentation on Title I. What is our achievement gap in this district?
Achievement gap between...
You, you heard exactly what I said, and you know what I mean. What is the achievement gap? I can go onto ISB's website right now and pull up the achievement gap. What is it?
I believe our achievement gap is...
What is it? No, do not interrupt me, I want to know what the achievement gap is. We are highlighting the fact that we have unfavorable people in our district. What is the achievement gap, and how do you plan to address that?
I was only going to suggest that we thought Mr. Justin Fenchin's station.
So be it.
Our achievement gap, if I remember correctly, between white and African American, it's about twenty-seven percent.
Twenty-seven percent.
And I believe that Hispanic and African American are about at the same level.
So that's a huge achievement gap, huge. So please provide now a narrative for me to help me understand why you have felt it was important to highlight unfavorable demographics. Please explain to me how this has impacted our numbers.
The point of that right there is that there has been an increase, not with people, but about, for example, our SES has grown as far as it's come down. So when we've done that, the scores continue to move, that means the teachers are working with their, their students and this collaboration, and they are, they're working hard to get good scores. It was nothing to be offensive to anyone about.
I cannot, I'm just, I'm, I'm just gonna stop talking because I'm so speechless right now, I just cannot believe that you did not read that statement and think that it would be offensive to people in this room. You are calling low income minorities and those individuals who cannot, who have limited English unfavorable. You begin in, in, in this community, more than half of the students in this district are minorities. So we are saying, we, these are unfavorable demographics. Our number of students in our district who are low income, yes, it has increased over the, over the past several years, we're calling them unfavorable. That seems okay? Now, did you know what the...
No, that was...
No, keep going, please.
That was...
We can, um, try...
I'm done, I'm done.
So we have to, we will look at this conversation, which again, Dr. Brand, this is, this is the reason that this, this presentation was asked to be done internally, because we get the system, that we have four years. What has not come out of that thing, and I'm not talking about the school improvement plans day by day, I'm talking about a strategic overarching plan about how we do things like this Title I, and not let it go unused, how we actually change the narrative about our district. Because we live here, and we lead with conversations about as opposed to the wonderful diversity in which we work with each individual where they are.
We lead with that sentence.
We lead with, get your house on the market, take the law, and get out of here with unfavorable demographics. That in turn impacts our homes, our community, and ultimately our children, because if this is what we live with, what are we feeding into our teachers we have to be with every day? What are we feeding into our administrators? What are we feeding into people who are supposed to be feeding into their lives? This language and words mean something?
Dating.
It, it does not help us have a positive conversation on how do we help kids raise from where they are. And we need that from you and your administration, which is why I specifically did not want this presentation, and this is why, um, Dr. Brand's numbers in the statistics piece, but I, again, that's, numbers can tell us whatever we want to tell them.
That's right.
You can show it whatever you want, and it can be that way. Not that I'm saying that you're actually even, I'm not, I'm saying that, we can look at this, and the fact that all of these graphs were thrown to me, and I've never seen them before, I couldn't form an intelligent question, but what I did hear was at the beginning, you got issues, and then the very end, you got issues, and it's, it's your kids. It wasn't a, hmm, what can we do as a district to help our kids? I heard blaming our numbers on our kids, and that is the message, and we're looking for support from everybody in this room, from our teachers, from our students, from our parents, from us, we want a rally to hide it, but not when you're blaming our kids for the issue. And that's what this presentation feels like. I want to roll up my sleeves and help, I want to roll up my sleeve and be a huge advocate, because my kids come here, I am here, but that message I can't get behind, and that's the hard part, because we are, we want to be a unified unit, so we can all look out and say we are doing our damnedest, that we are very clear on what's not going well, and we have a plan. But when we hide behind graphs, when we hide behind experts, when we don't roll up and say, this isn't working, this is screwed up, we got a plan, or we really don't, let's engage all of these wonderful, amazing people to make this happen, we then focus on remarkable achievement in light of unfavorable demographics, okay? So I just, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm purposely speaking this way, because this is not about the presentations, uh, to one of us, what it is about is the after. So really, so I'm not, I'm just, I'm just, I am, I'm speaking right at this, because I am not one of those folks that's gonna get up here and try to rally the crowds, that does not make sense to me for us to get on social media, bash our, our schools, it does not make sense to me when someone tries to get up here and get people to, yeah, we're all bad, because it doesn't help. What it does help is when I live here, and when someone comes to me and tells me this, and you don't agree with it, and we try to have conversations behind closed doors, in emails, maybe more like one, and activities forum. We've got to change first the conversation, we've got our kids.
Let's take one step back, one sec, one sec. Can I be honest, grade gaps seem to do it on racial categories. Why is this then? I said, no, I've never done it on race, but I always done it on economic factors, and things of this, it is not that it is respectful, it's by complete shape of form, because of the categories, the state uses the class of, that's what the state uses. I was just using the state's classification, which I don't like using race.
Okay, so what happens is, when we have a wonderful person that is un, I don't, I've never heard that term unfavorable demographics in a positive way, ever, what I'm sitting here trying to digest, a hundred fifty-two slides coming at me with no preparation, this is my, this is my reaction. Have we had time to digest? I gotta put the phone and say, you know what, this unfavorable demographic, what the heck does that mean? Give you a little bit of air cover, say, when you say this, please go to and point to the definition and say this piece of it. But unfortunately, what I'm leaving with right now is that you began with this, and you ended with this, and all in between there are a bunch of colors and slides and stuff that I have no clue about what to say, except that our kids are underperforming, and you blame our kids. That's why, so that's my, so, yeah, certainly right, so we don't have a conversation, a conversation can't happen like this, at all.
Yeah, I don't, I just, we're not blaming our kids.
That is unblaming our kids.
But that's what that's meant.
That's not saying because we have, um, we are changing the way we teach a little bit, it is not saying that we have to engage our students in a different way, it's not saying that we have whatever role models, whatever, the disruption in the administration for millions of years, it's not saying anything, it's saying unfavorable demographics.
It's saying in light of, or in spite of...
In light of, like, it's not saying, in light of the fact that we've had administrative turnover, in light of the fact that we have common core input, in light of the fact that we have such teachers who do two million things in one, in light of the fact that, and because of this business, it was, our scores are our scores because of unfavorable demographics, and you don't see that because it's sitting up there and there's no other factor up there but our kids. There's no self-reflection on everything that was really was, as a board, the policies, the district, not everything, even the, we're, we're trying, right? We are not even here trying to screw our kids. We got new technology in here, it works sometimes, it doesn't work sometimes, Tony is kicking butt to try to get that, I know he doesn't need people counseling him, but we've introduced technology, administration, teachers changes, asking them to do something different, and we have this piece of it. But that's not what I'm hearing, I'm hearing blame our children and their socioeconomic status as to why we're not doing, or, no.
No.
That we're still doing okay.
That's not a message that can, it's gonna, it deters the conversation to that.
I just have one question, remind me, does the state use unfavorable demographics?
They use limiting proficiency, low income, and middle aged.
So where did the term unfavorable?
That's my...
That's the one?
Thank you.
And that's one, skip this one, that one's a personal.
Any idea of history behind why the state uses those classifications?
Years and years and years, I have no idea, if you go into the state department or the state database, you will see that listed in your categories, and that's one of the defined categories that connect that on every year, every school, every school.
John, to clarify, you said that the state uses LEP, low income, he said that they don't use unfavorable demographics, is that correct?
That's right.
So the state does not, that was not a question, what, what's term you said?
The question was why and for how long the state has used those classifications.
The LEP, low income, and middle aged?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, and that was not where the question came in, it's, it's low income, those were the terms, you mean unfavorable demographics? Okay, and I'm sorry, I thought you said that term.
So is this, is this how we're leaving this? Is this the message? I, I, I'm not quite certain, again, what the narrative is that's attached to this, given how it started and how it ended. Please help me understand how we are supposed to take this information and translate it into some kind of possible doing forward. As I'm looking at you, there's that question for you, we've got two questions.
When those demographics were shown there, that was nothing against our students, that was nothing against our community, or community anybody, or anything of that nature. What that was to show is that we are making progress in our school districts, the changes that are taking place, right? There was nothing, there was no intent for something to be negative to our...
So is there anything on that, or can you please go back to the first slide?
I'm sorry, you found me, is there, that one, yes. So, key demographic influence, students that are determined, there's nothing that bothers them to you about this slide? I mean, if you don't see what it is that we are saying, that's troubling on a thousand and one different levels to me right now. This, this slide, this information is not bothering? What does this say, what does this mean to you?
I understand, I understand.
I say, can we take the separation, though? We, we didn't process it, we made the decision to listen to the presentation now and not table it, so we, we have information to, to read, right? Is there, there is, there is value in saying that this was starting, we need to take that and digest, ask questions, and then have a presentation by our school district and then this, so what is that? Because again, we got to look out for us, is it, is it a major suggestion that we, we didn't tell you, we listened, so we need to actually digest this for it, as we actually are more, more, more appropriate, less emotional, content-driven conversation and questions?
I think that maybe what we're looking at here as a follow-up is, we do need with staff to, um, the administration to digest this, and we'll get what information is relevant to our discretion in terms of, um, student performance, student growth, and, and really look at, at this, really in terms of, you know, what we can do with this, and I think that that's something we should expect in the near future, because it is important for us to have this information. I actually made the suggestion previously that, I think, again, this is a little criticism of your presentation, I think you're doing something differently than NWA when they come in and give an overview, I do think it's important that we have the contacts within our, our district to understand math scores, and that, just even on a basic level, and I think that it's, there are other issues that we need to explore here other than just what's on the surface. So, you know, again, this is, it, it is frustrating when there is enough time to really, you know, look at this, because there's a lot of stuff, and there's a lot of data pieces, and this is certainly, you know, I, I agree on the, I don't see how the demographic introduction relates to the data itself, I think that if we were going to look at that, that would be, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's disconnected from what we're really trying to get from our, for our, our kids.
I think that, yeah, again, first, okay.
Really, a lot of the audience has been with Heather, I haven't heard this from her.
Okay, well, I'll start, I think probably the best evaluation we had of the district was from the Northwest Talons search, and that was done at the end of the year last year, and we did not include it, because one of their suggestions this year, this year is already October, they gave us that report in May, I was in that meeting, and some of the suggestions they had, I think were far more beneficial than the presentation I just heard, because they gave it to us in simple terms and with some simple... I just heard because they gave it to us in simple terms and with some simple steps that we could take immediately. And I think we, I think that's probably the most important study we have. We don't need another statistical study to tell us what's going on here. I mean, after all, we have kids, we all have kids in the classroom right now. So I can tell you statistically what's happening because I have five in the district. So I can tell you step by step. But more importantly, I think we need to take the data that we already have and implement some of the things that's going to benefit our children immediately. We don't need another study.
Okay, so with that, I would say that what we're looking at is, I mean, we need relevant action steps that is relevant to our data in our district, the home board, and addressing some of the trends in the downward and find out what has gone well with the trends in the downward.
I am sure Ms. Crawford is very well-versed in MAP. We've had discussions and I know we speak the common language. So I don't think you need to bring anybody out in. You need to let your resident expert do her work without her hands tied behind your back. I'm just saying. We've never had a plan. We never hear plan. We hear all these lofty ideas and nothing ever gets executed. So I don't, I don't understand. That was all gobbledygook and it's just a bunch of excuses. And to make excuses for ISB and the changes that they've done, they're our governing board. We have to pay attention to them. Park matters, we may not like it, but suck up and eat your peas and carrots. It's what we have to do. Those standards are our standards. It is what we are held to and we look lousy now. So, we've got to change. We've got to change fast.
Well, if you don't mind, I want to, I realize there's a lot of questions. Mr. Nelson.
So I have some questions for you, Dr. Graham, probably just a few questions. So you started this slide with a statement that there's essentially a causal correlation between these groups and test scores. But then you just showed us a bunch of slides. You showed us some slides where, you know, some test score went up, you claim there was a trend upward, right?
I'm serious.
Okay. You claim there was a trend upward, right? On some of your slides?
Sure.
Did you correlate that with the increasing number of black students or students with low income?
As I, I correlated all those things with the demographics that are given by the state of low income. I've never done a correlation based on race.
Okay, so you started this slide with a statement that there is a correlation, but you've never actually done any analysis to support that statement.
Well, I have extensively built models, or I include forecasts, based on all the demographics that you've spent from the district crediting on this demographic characteristics.
Talk about my district. You just told me you've never done an analysis based on race. Your first slide.
I've done on race, I've done on demographic factors, and that's right there.
I'm asking about this district. And your analysis of this data.
I have done a forecast model on this district based on the demographics. I do not think race is playing a role in that.
Mr. Nelson, if I may, if you have a specific question you'd like to ask without following the series of questions, I hate to, I understand that, but you're, I appreciate this, but you can ask, because I don't want to, it's not necessarily meant to be a forecast.
It's not that you have a separate, a grade.
No, I want to say, there's a simple question. Will you have any factual basis to support the statements you made in that first slide?
Absolutely.
Where is it? Because it's on those slides, is it?
No, okay, thank you.
Where is it?
You have a question?
The working papers, can you go to them?
I assume that you asked your, what they gave you presentation, what they expected?
Okay, I have this suggestion.
Director Victor.
If you have questions, email the district. That's fine, if you will credit those as soon as you can.
Problem is, look, the assumption that they're making isn't true. It's worse than you just insulting black people. It's not factually true that a bunch of poor kids are dragging their test scores down. It's not true. But we can't get anyone to look at the actual data because if you did, it's sealed and true. It's worse than just saying black people are positive. He's sitting on data that proves the opposite and they're not doing the analysis.
Okay, thank you. That's something we need to review later on. Yes?
So, you know, okay, so first of all, I just want to say, I hope that this evening doesn't make us retreat from having these conversations. Like if anything, it shows that we need to have more of these conversations and that we need to get deeper into the data and into all of the factors here. I've done a little bit of research, certainly not to the level of sophistication of the data behind that presentation. It is based on art and the trends that I'm seeing, I really do think that we, you know, it would be beneficial if we did take a look across all of those factors, low income, African-American, Hispanic, white, so forth, and also go even deeper than that, potentially taking a look at those people that are, the folks that have moved into the district and how they're doing in comparison to people who have been here for a period of time and so forth. Not as a problem of, okay, they're the problem, but more importantly, where is it that we need to put the resources and what specific remedies do we need to have to address the specific areas that pop out as those outliers, right?
That was done in the Northwestern study.
And so that's, for me, that's one of the more, and I think especially because it looks like we're doing a fairly, and too, I want to commend, you know, the district doesn't stink. You know, it's not like the worst in the entire world. When we take a look at, you know, other districts, frankly, we're not looking all that bad, especially in comparison to what it is that we're spending, which is much less in many, many, many districts that are doing much worse. So I don't think that we have to throw the whole baby out of the bathwater, but I think that there are some screaming needs within this community that we are not addressing. And I'd say one of those aspects from all that I've seen so far is what are we doing to be inclusive, you know, beyond just the, you know, blah, 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 you know? Is, what are we doing for those new families that are moving? What are we doing for the lower-income families? How much a part of this community do they feel, you know, are PTO set up to actually support them and have them be invited? Are we writing them off? What type of access are we giving them outside resources, outside of the school? How are we making that connection? And to me, I think that there's just a lot that we can do collectively, so. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I think you have a lot of great ideas. I think that benefits the district. Email them to the administration, somebody to review that.
But the one, one thing I'd have to say is us that has to do this, it can't just Again, I hope that just this level of upset does not dissuade people from having this conversation.
Thank you very much.
Yes?
Yes. And looking at, well, a couple, and looking at the slide, so, a couple of things that I think we need to be aware of as we move on in this conversation. Number one, this is a clear example of institutional racism. You say offensive, but this is institutional racism, clear. Why? When you ask for numbers based on a certain demographic to prove a certain thing that you want to prove, again, you can make numbers say what you want them to. That is, and then institute or try to institute policy based on blaming who was wrong, that's institutional racism, as is clear, number one. So we got to be clear about that, not just saying it's offensive, it's racism, period. Now, why do you say it like that? So that you can move forward, understanding what it is to break whatever that leads to be down. We got $162,000 waiting to be used to get through to some child that may learn differently than someone else. Doesn't mean they're deficient. Difference is not deficient. And so, instituting those policies, using the money to get that done, that's number one, that's number two. Third thing is, I think in terms of looking at how we do these numbers, it would seem to me that from fall to spring is a better telling than spring to spring. Like my sister said, after, so I would just like some clarity around why, again, I'm kind of speaking kind of fast, why would it be go spring to spring instead of fall to spring?
Okay, so this is something that typically, well, let me put it to you this way. So, as part of the teacher assessment, the actual assessment, we look at growth models from, you know, how do kids do at point A compared to later on in the year, and then the expected growth from those kids that we expect. So, you know, myself as a teacher, my kids test in October, and, I'm sorry, they test in September, and we test it again in February, and based on that growth, that would factor into my teacher evaluation. That's called a type one test because it's something that is nationally known. So many districts do measure themselves on how effective they are and certainly how effective their teachers are by just saying, okay, the time kids share up your class at the fall, how well do they do in spring? Another measurement would be spring to spring, and another one would be fall to fall. What is important with measuring growth is that there is some consistency. So it's a choice to measure that the administration has made from point, from one point in one year to a following year.
Can you understand why we made that choice?
Can I just, people aren't, let me ask you something. Just keep up to say another day. So, you know, if kids, they go to school, it's the spring time, they're out for the summer, yeah, they had grades, great, great grades, then all summer, they get hanging out, have a good time, have a good book, their grades kind of, so they start out, they fall, kind of, right? So if I measured that person where they were in fall, which is probably down here, to spring, then they run, right? Because now it's easier, so how would it be in the year, right? So if you measured somebody from fall where they, probably grades were down, and up here, I think it gives you a different sense of spring to spring, right? So where they were spring last year, the spring this year, just gives you one point in time where they were, may have been, I don't know, the test. So it's just really looking at it at one point in time to one point in time because you're looking at them from one full school year they've been at school to another school. Am I right? Help me understand.
I have one question, by, what, what went into making that a measure, spring to spring? Is that a choice? What went into the choice?
The choice is you got actually a full year of teaching under there, right? So the bridge says, I've been now in school teaching you from September, October, November, December, January, February, March, and May, to, you know, to this time, right? So I'm measuring you from the end of that school year to the end of the school year and choice to go at you, you got to teach you at that time. I think that, you know, when you're saying fall to spring, it is giving a different look at, you speak more to that than to something I was trying to, just because I know my district is, they got some targets.
What we're trying to do is close any achievement gaps that may exist. So if we just start measuring from fall to spring, there's going to be that growth. But if we do spring to spring, it is our hope to catch up the regression over summer of all of our students and then continue to move ahead in closing any achievement gaps that there may be. And the statistics from our MAP scores to differentiate instruction by resources for the children to help to move them.
Is that helpful?
It helps, but I'll just, I'll, I'll.
So I think that moving forward on this, that we, I think there's consensus that we do need to see how this data is relatively applied to our curriculum so that we can address the needs of students and move kids forward. And that is something that should come from within so that this is tied to what we're doing here. And again, I appreciate Dr. Graham, the work you did to this. I know that you put a lot of work on this and, and, and we're appreciated. The, and I would say that, again, moving forward, we need to be very clear about what we expect from the data that we're getting, and there should be an end piece out here. So that's a conversation that Superintendent I will have, and, but it certainly, we want to hear from our, my corrector curriculum so that we can plan for that in the future and move as soon as we can possibly.
Okay, I might add that we have, in my short time being on the board, we have a great history of setting things that we're going to do and we don't follow up into them. So I would like to know that that's not a directive. I didn't give a directive. So I like to hear so that it's on record and so that there is a follow-up, like what's the next step? What are we, what are we asking for? What are we going to do with this? Is there going to be a separate conversation that's held in the district specifically to talk about this? What is, because I don't want to come back in two weeks.
I understand.
So.
So what is our takeaway? In two weeks, what is our takeaway?
That's what I'm asking.
So, Dr. Duster, can you elaborate on what we should expect in a timeframe by which you can get back to us, but we can look at this information and we can look at our test scores and match them to some outcomes which we can observe throughout the school year.
Well, you're going to have school improvement plans being presented next, and they're going, they've already addressed all of this data from what they've studied during the retreat, and that is what this, all of this is for. If you want to have a meeting in the future, we can have a meeting and have discussions, but we're going to need some time to get things prepared for that. And there, I believe it's the second week of October, we're only here for two days. So we're going to need some time to get this ready, and I can't sit here and tell you when and how long it would take. I have to sit down and talk with them.
I have a question. I have a question too.
Concrete request. I would like to see the raw underlying data that you do. We got people in this community that are perfectly capable of doing our own analysis. It is incredibly frustrating to sit here year after year and watch this wash through data. That's a concrete step. You can make it available publicly, want to have a discussion about the data, allow the members of the committee who are, who want to look into it, look into it. Concrete and easy. Already give it to him, turn it over, you can do it tomorrow.
So, thank you, Mr. Nelson, for your suggestion. When do you think you might get, give us a timeframe by which we can, we have an idea of when you should expect this? Is this something that we would see in a Friday board update or is this something that we've used the entire two weeks to plan the timeframe and a series of outcomes to give the data?
A series of what?
Well, in terms of looking at the data and how it matches up with our, I appreciate what about that school improvement plans, but is there a timeframe by which you can let us know what the next step is that you are able to do as a district?
We can have discussion on it and let you know this week, no later.
Okay.
So, so then, will school improvement plans discuss all of this data as well as achievement gaps and what each building plans to do in terms of improving those numbers over the course?
Yeah, we've not addressed achievement gaps specifically throughout the retreat. We've looked at our data and how, what can we do to help grow our children, all children?
May I just address?
Yes.
Everyone here, we really do appreciate, I mean, the fact that we actually have little parents here just kind of listening that we've never seen before. It's still some engagement here and I sincerely, we appreciate it. I am going to ask something too, as of all of us. Our principals are about to get up and do school improvement plans. They've worked very hard with their teachers at that local level, the ones that, you know, who have complimented whatever we're trying to do here, but I ask just with respect of their work through this, no matter how passionate we are in letting them get through the presentations, that there is real work being done outside of this boardroom where people may not understand or people, but, but these are folks that are daily with our children that have looked into us. I just ask that we, wherever your passion is, a class of support would be really appreciated too, if you happen to see that, but I will ask because this week we've come off a very passionate conversation, which is awesome, right? We need that passion, but we're trying to guide the passion into something that is a lot, that is positive and helpful in our district going forward. And I just ask, you know, as we do these presentations, that we allow that to happen and then you can ask questions that way, but I just felt I needed to say that because I know how hard it is, principals and teachers that touch our kids every day, and they may follow up with a data piece, but I ask that a lot of, they do a lot.
So to close this conversation, Mr. President, can you follow up with an email or conversation to Dr. Duster about what the it is that? to Dr. Duster about what the it is that we would be looking for in the next iteration of this?
Certainly. So Friday, by the end of the day Friday, we'll have a very clear picture of what our next step is with it.
And, and the expectation is that the presentation and the discussion will be led by the leaders of our school district?
Yes. Is there no further questions?
I want to next agenda item, which is the building school improvement plans. Once again, thank you, Dr. Graham.
I, I really appreciate it, and there's, if you, if you know me, you know that there's nobody who would bear advocate for, for audience members who have any opportunity to ask a question. Because the time is great, and because we've spent a lot of time in the last point, I'm happy to stay afterward and answer more questions. I'm happy to direct you to more knowledgeable people than myself within the district, but we will, we do have to move on from this point, and I will keep you in mind if you have a question about this, and I'll make sure to be the first person. Thank you.
Thank you. For those of you who I have not met, I'm Elizabeth Crawford. I am the Director of Curriculum and Learning within the school here, and happy to work in this district, and happy to work with this one group of principals and building leaders. I'm going to set the principals and building leaders up to discuss their school improvement plans, which we worked on only this summer with their teams. I'm going to talk a little bit about the process and a little bit about some more data, the PARC data, as well as some additional MAP data, and then our principals will come up and talk about their specific school action things. And it's.
Did you say you were going to talk about PARC data?
Yes.
So we use PARC data in the school improvement plan, but we don't use PARC data in an overall discussion?
It's still preliminary data.
The PARC data?
No, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not over sometimes, so they look at a lot of data for principals.
But it's relevant, isn't it? Because you're creating school improvement, you're creating school improvement plans off of preliminary data, so you must think that it's relevant.
We think it's another factor for assessment. Is it relevant? I, I don't know. Last year we took it twice, or two years ago we took it twice, last year we took it once. We don't know if PARC is going to be around forever, but it is a factor as far as looking at how we're moving.
So I think, so since we're using it here, and the principals are creating plans off of that, then that should be part of this next level of discussion, Mr. President, when we're talking about data. I'm sorry, Ms. Crawford.
Okay, so our process for 2016, we have a data retreat on August 8th over the summer with the principals as well as their school improvement team. Principals select school improvement teams based on a representative of teachers and other building leaders in their building. They work together to develop everything that I've go through in the plan, and they continuously come together to refine and refresh and review their plans. We use a SMARTboard format, so our purpose in using SMARTboards is that they focus on a few things that are likely to have the greatest impact. And I believe the district has been using SMARTboard process for several years. Why SMART works is focused, and focuses on the short and long term. Goals should be aligned, and at the end of the day, we want all of our plans to focus on results. So there's a few things that you will see in these school improvement plans. What you will see presented from our principals today will not be the full plans, the full plan with all of the goals and all of the indicators and the measures included in the board package. They will do a highlighted summary of that today, but in the plans you will see indicators. So indicators are observable evidence that the goal is being achieved. So, for example, another way to put that is what is the look for? So if I go into a classroom and the indicator is guided reading, I know as someone who's monitoring that indicator, I'm going to look for evidence of effective guided reading. Measures and targets. So the tools used to monitor progress towards the goal, the measures are and should be specific to the indicators. So that would tell me, what about guided reading are you looking for? You're looking for something like students paying close attention to the text and tracking words. That would be something that I'm using to measure us towards the indicator, our effectiveness towards the indicator. It should be based on data, what is attainable, and based on research, also what is attainable. So also involved in this is determining how. How will we present our SMART goals to our staff at the beginning of the school year? Principals engage their staff in understanding their plans and what the goals are for the school year. Again, the school improvement teams are comprised of a small group within the building, so it is not just one, the principal to be the leader and manager of the team, it's a shared leadership effort. How will we share our school targets? How will we help each grade level team review its data and set grade level targets? Our school improvement, our, our teams take the school improvement plan, and then each grade level develops a goal based on the school improvement plan, so that there is alignment throughout the building. This is just a graphic to show the progression between actions and plans that drive implementation, school-wide strategies to drive school goals, and school SMART goals and measures. I'm going to skip through a few of these because they're a little redundant. In the school improvement plan, you will see, you will see the structure, and this is just stripped down. So you will again see the SMART goal. There will be a few indicators that measure the SMART goal, and then there will be more measures that measure the indicator, which traces back to the SMART goal, and eventually the target. Here's an example of a completed one. This is for the district level. So you have the example of a district level goal for reading, and then the indicators, the measures could be several of our different assessments that we use in the district, so NWA MAP, AIMS Web, NWA Growth, unit pre and post-assessment, so trying to get a variation of our multiple assessments. And then your targets would be based again on those assessments. We follow the Plan Do Study Act, which is a very common continuous improvement method, also known as the DEMING circle. This is a, a strategy that's used in not just education, but in healthcare and business also, to just illustrate the steps that any organization should take in monitoring the effectiveness of its change. So anything as simple or as small as implementing guided, guided reading, starting with planning for it, what are the actions that are studied, what actually happened, what are the actions that you're going to take? The big takeaway with the Plan Do Study Act or a few things is continuous, which is why it's cyclical in nature. So we never stop. We're constantly assessing how it worked, how did it go, what should we do differently next time, and constantly asking ourselves those questions. So, any questions on this before I go into a little bit more of our data and then talking about the school improvement plans? Okay. So I am going to share a little bit just our raw data for MAP that was mentioned earlier today. This is an example of the district level report, this is for mathematics. And again, I think it's been clarified before, but I just want to clarify again. The diamond means the school district or the school's projected growth. The bars mean where we should be, in very simple terms. MAP uses lots of fancy terms, breaking it down, this is where it's saying we should be, this is where we are for the diamond.
Yes. So sixth graders are here, so it's saying that we should be, we should be down, down, there, and we're projecting to be, where are we? At sixth grade, saying that we should be between negative five and zero, and then our growth was negative, that's not true.
We, you're saying why is this down? Because it shows negative.
Okay, and then we should be at the, right, got you, thank you.
Sorry, I shouldn't have, but that, sorry, apologize. One thing I want to point out on this type of chart that I'm sharing today, I know there's been a lot of discussion about pulling spring to spring or fall to spring reports, which are both helpful for different reasons. For the purpose of our school improvement plan, our principals and our school improvement teams start with spring to spring data, because in the summer, when we're planning, that's all we have. So going back to the cyclical nature of our continuous improvement process, when we get fall data, and we just closed the window on Wednesday for fall data, our principals and our school improvement teams will go back and say, now, we did plan over the summer based on the spring, now that we're in the fall and we have fresh data, we can take another look and see where we need to make adjustments and refine it. And that's part of the process of looking at our planning in a continuous nature. So again, you will notice that this chart says spring to spring, sometimes you will see other charts that say fall to spring, but this purpose, that's why we're using that. This is reading, and again, this is a district level. So I'm going to talk about PARC strictly, and you can see some of it in our school improvement plans highlighted as well. As Dr. Duster mentioned, the state level PARC data is preliminary, is available on ISB's website, but it is advertised as preliminary, so it's safe to share here, but again, the state level numbers are still in preliminary status. I mean, sure.
Yes.
Also, only the state number is still in the preliminary?
The state level numbers.
So the district is what it is?
So, to clarify, any PARC scores provided by the state are still in preliminary status. However, they are available and usable as preliminary on this data.
And sorry, just to clarify then, does that also include our district representation in those two columns to the right? So I guess I'm a little confused, so.
Yeah.
The, the, are the two columns on the left, that's preliminary?
Yes.
The two columns on the right, that's us, and that's fairly consistent?
No. Fifteen is, well, that's previous. Any 2016 data that's provided by the state right now is officially, is technically still in preliminary status. It is not, meaning you won't be able to go to ISB, at the Illinois State Board of Education, and see our official report card with this data yet, but we have been told that it's coming very soon. But those scores are available at preliminary status for anyone to view on ISB's website.
Let's, let's clarify one more time, too. So, for example, third grade, fifty-three percent is a district. The exact number for that may be fifty-three point two, or it may be fifty-two point nine. If you go to the district, forty-five in 2015, that might have been forty-four point eight. What happened is they've just run them up to the nearest one, so they're not exact to the decimal point four.
So to keep things simple, today, we just wanted to show the, the whole numbers. So two ways to look at this, as a district, from 2015 to 2016, you can see how each grade went up or down or stayed the same on PARC. We have third grade forty-five to fifty-three, fourth thirty-five to forty-two, fifth thirty-four to forty-four, sixth twenty-two to twenty, seventh twenty-three to twenty, and eighth sixteen to nineteen. And that is for mathematics.
What is? I'm sorry, so just making sure I'm getting this right. So what we are measuring is last year's eighth grade class that then graduated to this year's eighth grade, right? It's not seventh grade progressive.
Right, this is not homework data, that's not how it's being looked at, yes.
And just to clarify, one further point, has the, has the MAP, I'm sorry, the PARC test changed significantly this year from last year? Is it the same test? That's, that's kind of what I'm asking.
It depends on which subject you're looking at, and it depends on which grade level you're looking at. Some reports where that, some grade levels changed greatly and that some did not. I don't, I don't think that's, I'm unable to say that it was completely different.
Okay, but, but some are, might be different.
The levels of questioning may have been different, I think, is that what you're asking for? I think the levels of questioning may have been different.
I guess, I guess it comes down to, so the, the PARC test, it's, it's still kind of formulated, and they really are still filling the line offline.
Absolutely.
And so, just in terms of these numbers from one year to the next, I'm trying to, you know, just put this in context, is.
Sure.
You know, is this the same test from one year to, so like, when you take the ACT, they make slight changes, but go, it's the same test.
Absolutely. So this is still an assessment that's being defined, refined, and.
Okay.
And assessed even of itself. I think that our point in sharing this is that, at this point, in terms of state level data, this is what we have. This is what's available, and districts throughout the state have it and are using it, and it's helpful for us to also know where we stand as well.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that I understand. So 2015 numbers, that's solid, we got that, that's, that's pretty much solid. 2016 numbers on the state level, that's, that's tentative or preliminary numbers, we'll call them. So how can we, for the district, how do we come up with, how do we come up with those numbers if the state numbers are preliminary?
Right, so what we do have is that the state has given us our individual students' scores and our grade level scores. Those came to the districts before the, the district posted their official, or the state posted their official average.
But they're preliminary.
The state level, yes.
But not what in our.
So they have shared with us our individual student report cards. Those are in hard copy form at this point, and it's just a matter of, we have to tabulate all of them and get them out to everyone, but.
So those will change, those numbers will change.
They will not change.
But the state numbers may change.
Yeah, I mean, with the state, even the preliminary state numbers, they are posted on the state website, they are there. It's not, it's not that we have to go fishing for this anywhere, it's there. What is not published is the state official report card for our school districts, school districts just don't have that yet.
Okay.
So, well, so twenty-two percent of sixth graders met or exceeded MAP in 2015. So how does that coincide with how sixth graders did in MAP on the map in 2015? I mean, because this, you know, I don't mean to say how twenty-two percent looks, right? So how does that, if I go back to Dr. Graham's presentation, there's growth all around except for sixth grade, so I don't see that here. So how does this relate to MAP data, and then how, and you might be getting to this, so if you do, just tell me, then how do, how does that then translate into actual plan at a building by building level?
So the reality is, is that MAP and PARC do not align right now. They are not, those are not two assessments that we should lay side by side and expect direct comparisons to. The reality of our state and the situation that our state is in is that we need to plan and teach for both, and that's just the state of Illinois. They have not made a decision either way on if we're going to go whole hog Illinois with PARC, or we go whole hog with NWA. There is value, however, in both assessments, instructionally, because they are challenging our students in different ways, so it is very important that we pay attention to how our students are performing on. our students are performing on math, it is equally important that we pay attention to how our students are performing on PARP, both telling us different things, not just for our students are growing, but for the type of, the type of decisions that we make instructionally at the district level, in terms of curriculum selections, and paying attention to the resources we're providing, because we need to be able to have our students successful on both right now. Okay, again, this is a lot of numbers, I just wanted to show, school by school, how those numbers went, this will be available in the presentation as well. So we've got each grade level, 2015 versus 16 for math. And I won't read all those numbers, but if anyone wants me to zero in on something, they certainly will. And then, again, looking at that same previous chart for ELA, so you can see the district where we went 2015 to 16. Let me just say this also, and I was making this reflection this morning, we know that there's a lot of work to do. While it's helpful to prepare ourselves to the state average, let's be cognizant that the state average is not extremely high, so we want to, we don't want to just meet the state average, we need to exceed it. I got a lot of work to do. Okay, this is, again, ELA, 2015 to 16, each grade level, and how each school performed. Any further questions on PARP?
Do we benchmark at all against other schools? Do we have some of the benchmark, because if the state isn't in...
Yeah.
Then what, which are?
Right, so I believe that Dr. Graham has done some of that work previously. I'm not engaged in benchmarking to other city districts yet, but I believe last year he shared some data on benchmarking us with districts like Deerfield, like Edison was in there as well, a couple, a couple of others.
I have to interject that during the Northwestern study, they did benchmark with us with another community, they had the same, pretty much the same social economic level and education level with the, with parents, and we were still doing, we weren't doing as well as that district, and that's how they decided some of the things that we should do, that we're not doing. So that was done as well. But we haven't seen any of that data presented, other than that one presentation that they gave, that's, I mean, but I know Ms. Crawford...
Yeah, we will be working with her throughout the school year, absolutely.
Just to give some stuff, what we do is, we use Tinsdale, District 115, one, I believe, as well, is it one one?
One England.
One England, I'm sorry. And, and North Chicago, we had, we had a scale in middle, Homewood is right next to us, and I think there's a couple of districts, I want to say that feed into, Tinsdale South High School, which we also used as well, which are in our neighborhood somewhere.
Do you remember what district they used for that study, the Northwestern Town, for the year?
You know what, not, and Dr. really appreciate your question, that is something that we will come back to as a district, because we put a heavy investment in that, and there was a lot of, of very useful data we did get from that, but it's, you know, that information is kind of, with this, is kind of like comparing apples and oranges, the oranges are important, and so are the apples, but let's finish this, and I promise we'll be back to your question in the future. Go ahead.
So, our schools are going to share out their highlights of their school improvement plans, I want to say, a few things to set them up. You will not see the full school improvement plan that is included in the report package, that's a lengthy document, but here's what you will see from, or hear from principals, you will hear about their successes, you will hear about their gains or their greatest area of need, and those are, those two things are different for each school, understanding that our schools are diverse, we are coming with diverse needs, we are coming with different successes and challenges and things to hold on to and things to work on, and we honor that, and we respect the flexibility that principals and school leadership teams need to address their needs as, as they see fit. You will also hear about their action plans, so again, going back to that Plan Do Study Act, you will hear the, the few things that schools have identified that is they need to focus on in order to address their greatest area of need. What you will not hear is a static plan, because again, our process is cyclical in nature, we believe in going back and revisiting what we need to do to refine and improve and studying what has worked and what hasn't, so these are action steps for now, with the understanding that we will be working with our principals throughout the school year to continue planning. So, Western Avenue is up next, our president will join us. I hope it works for you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
Good evening, board of commissioners, thank you so much for allowing us to present this evening, to tell the story of our individual schools, and hopefully we'll be getting some information about what should teacher planning or school improvement plan looks like at that building level. First off, I just want to begin by thanking my team, none of this is possible without the teachers and the data teams working, and they really do do a great job day in, day out, of having some really sometimes challenging conversations, but also some professional conversations about what we can do in order to improve the success and the achievement of all of our students here in 161. So just to share off, as I said, data is a great place to begin dialogue, to begin a conversation, and to have that as continuous and ongoing. One of the things that we're proud of is in the area of math, math in NWA, our spring grade scores for all grade levels had a minimum of eight point one to twenty point four points of growth. That is spring to spring, one of the things that we really like to take a look at. Traditionally, students are testing at their highest point in that spring score, and so, again, this is kind of, it was explained a little bit, when they come in the fall, if there's a little dip, sometimes it's a significant dip, maybe ten points, if they grow ten points, they're just back to where they were. We want to set that goal higher for them, and we need to have students grow beyond that. As you take a look at our math growth, one of the things that we really want to celebrate, if you take a look at kindergarten, eighty, maybe six point two, our fifth graders are almost achieving the same amount of growth as our kindergarten, where traditionally we see the highest amount of growth. In the area of reading, Western degrees for spring, the spring grade scores for all grade levels were seven point four to nineteen point six, and again, we're seeing growth at all grade levels, in the sixtieth percent and above. We recognize, too, that there is some areas of need, and we're taking a look at multiple data points, we're taking a look at PARP, we're taking a look at math, we're taking a look at running records, we're taking a look at our home assessments, and we're, we're kind of putting that whole story together, so that we're not facing our plan on just one particular point, but we're bringing all those data points into the conversation, and the teachers are looking at all those different data points. So one of the things that we really want to focus in on in math this year is to build in even math vocabulary, one of the skill sets that we are seeing as a trend kind of brought aboard, from students using the proper vocabulary, when they're going through either the, the process, or they're going through the algorithm, so that, you know, our second graders using the word times, that they're using the word multiplication, that they're using divisors, that they're using that terminology, and it's one of those areas that we think all of our students can really focus in on, in order to build a greater multi-step problem solving. Where teachers are at, how they get to success in either of those assessments we talked about, whether it's PARP, as much as I read Illinois State Learning Standards, or it's math that is focused more on a skill base, our learning continuum within NWA pulls out a personalized learning cap for all of our kind of students, in order to increase their grade scores or to meet those particular goals. And so one of the things that is new on NWA this year is, it used to just give a content area, for instance, it would give a sub-content area in math of geometry, and then it would give specific skills. Now, when you go into the, or into that learning continuum, it actually aligns the standards for teachers, which is going to be a big tool for them to be able to use, so that they can start to see that alignment between PARP and math, and not so much in terms of types of question, test types of question, but they can see the alignment in terms of the skill that needs development. In terms of reading, one of the big things that when we drill down our data, and math and PARP gives us the data of how much time did a student spend on a particular test, one of the things that we're really starting to see is, if a student's not interested in the test, they click and move really quickly past that particular passage. And so, last year, we focused more on the flexibility of tests, this year, we really need to start taking a look at endurance and stamina within informational tasks, so that our students can learn to have that moment of struggling a little bit, and it may not be a hundred percent interested in this particular topic, but one of the things that we really want to do is persevere and go, and, and teach them some specific skills and tools to how to further evolve in that, that reading endurance and stamina. And then finally, we want to have a culture goal, and that focus on relationships, teacher-to-student, teacher-to-administration, and administration to the community. And here's some of our action plan summaries. So we want fifty percent of all reading to be focused on informational tasks with increased length. There's a lot of times that our students have in our reading block, we have over a hundred and eighty minutes of reading time in terms of our block, sorry, a hundred and twenty minutes of reading time within that reading block. We want to make sure that when students are either at the guided table, or they're at maybe a particular station, that they are focused on informational tasks with increased length, and that it's at the appropriate, appropriate website. In math, Pearson and the police released an item bank that is rich, so that our students can start being exposed to more PARP-like questions, not in the context of, all right, it's January, and we're going to start getting ready for PARP, but throughout the year. And so, we also have a tool that a lot of our teachers are using called Enjolastic, that other teachers throughout the country have also built that test thing, and it allows the teacher to do almost instantaneous analysis through that particular tool. And then, our teachers are using IXL Math this year in embedded instruction, and basically that has personalized learning cap all the way through Algebra II trick, so we can challenge our high achievers as well.
I'm sorry, so are we, are you not using Odyssey?
We are.
So students are using Odyssey and that?
Where it's appropriate. We're using, as I said, IXL in terms of, we sometimes have some really high achievers that, as opposed to placing them in an Algebra I course, we have their ability to do it now locally, than to have to send it apart.
So do they have support? Is there support at the building level for those students who are doing that level of math, not going on, doing this online web-based program?
As I said, that web-based program will take them all, all the way through in Algebra II trick.
So is there, so is there, where do they go for help? I think the question might be, is there a teacher trained to address this, this support, so that if they get stuck while they're with IXL, that they can turn to their teacher, and then they can help work through the issue, is that the question?
That is the correct, thank you.
Sure. I know we have one particular teacher on staff that can assist that has a math background. And, so in terms of our culture, we have a focus in terms of our theme this year is on creativity, innovation, and citizenship. We're looking to increase project-based learning in order to engage our students, and have that engagement part, as part of our culture, and as was said earlier, we're looking at integrating our talking circles at every grade level, at least once during the week, it's happening much more frequently as needed throughout the building. And then we also have a program called Ripple Effect, where we're really reaching our tier two and tier three students that need extra support, and that's just another social-emotional learning program, and support to supplement what our students are having in that tier one, which is our second step program.
So I'm just sorry, Ripple Effect, is that tier one, tier two, and tier three in culture, or the social-emotional learning?
It's social-emotional learning, Ripple Effect really, it, it, it's a great program because it can be a tier one if you just need a little more support or pressure.
Right.
Or it can be more intensive at a tier two or tier three level.
But it's not specifically Ripple Effect to integrate social-emotional learning techniques with kids who are in tier two for math, it's specifically for this?
We also have tiered in terms of behavior.
Okay, got you.
Because we're operating from the MTSS approach of, we're tiering alcohol for academics, and we're also tiering out our behavior students.
Okay, did, so do the two ever overlap in terms of, you know, certainly if kids having, you know, problems in class coping, especially through healthy stamina and endurance, that they have some sort of support to help them persevere through math problems and through reading problems? Is that, are they, do they exist separately, or do they, or do they work in tandem with other, you know, tiers of MTSS? I guess, that's my question.
So, was your question about the math?
Right, so in terms of, you know, the way we address, and I'm going to be...
No, no.
The way we address, because I think this sounds great, this is a fantastic thing, I'm really encouraged by this, but I guess, so it's not existing in the silo, are we also observing how this dovetails into other curriculum? Is there, you know, are we looking at this in terms of cultural, social-emotional time, or is this, you know, integrated with the rest of the curriculum data?
Oh, absolutely, it's not just stop, and we're, we're doing this, we do this, especially when we do our social-emotional lesson, that's integrated and usually paired up with any ELA lesson, translated where and when appropriate.
Okay.
So it's not just, you stop, but sometimes it is appropriate where, you stop, there's an issue going on in the classroom, we really need to address this, and so, teachers are acquiring more tools where they can add that autonomy to make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
I will turn it over to Parker.
Thank you, Judge Purcell.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mr. President, board members, everyone, to those of you that I've not met, my name is Vicki Purcell, and I am the interim principal at Parker School. You all know Ms. Fountain as the assistant principal at Parker School, so since this is the beginning of her sixth week, and the end of my sixth day, we thought that we would present this information together, so we are together.
I'm looking at our math, we're looking at our successes. In math, overall, fifty-one point three percent of our students are reading or exceeding the RIT norm for the max screen assessment, and in math, we have found that our areas of strength are real and complex number systems, and operations, and algebraic thinking.
And likewise, in reading, overall, fifty-five point three percent of students are reading or exceeding the RIT norm, and the area of strength indicated from the text, from the text is literature.
Is that all grades?
Yes.
Is that what that number represents?
Yes, the average, yes.
Our greatest areas, areas of need, first of all, we want to increase our overall student growth on math and all grade levels. In math, we want to improve in the area of geometry, statistics, and probability.
And the same with reading ELA to improve in informational tasks and vocabulary skills. I know it's about fifty-five percent on the screen before, just because that's a success does not mean that there's, that's not an area to grow as well, but these numbers were a little lower, so that's what we're going to look at. And then also recognizing the impact that school culture has on student achievement, we are still, just like the other buildings, trying to improve on our... trying to improve on our building relationships, which is in the plan.
And one thing that you could ask there, as a school member but also as a parent, you have come into a challenging year. But I can tell you that the positive culture, the lack of physical complications, the my child actually came home and talked about school rather than the fight that happened or the thing that didn't happen or the steps she wore. I want to just commend you and your teachers because you've kept these kids focused. So I understand this area of need and appreciate that it is still an area of need. If you want to make a significant, the tone in the school says we're going to do this together and the kids feel that. And that starts with that. So I want to just personally just thank you on your sixth day.
Please extend that because you're here, but it's to all of those teachers that are truly in there that have gotten this from their, you know, from their teachers to their culture. Kids, we feel in all this angst and anxiety and emotion, but the kids are like, we're over that. So thank you for that. Please, please truly extend that.
And that was a line back.
Okay, I do so much. Thank you so much.
Our action plan, realizing that we do have some work to do and we are dedicated to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to make sure that our students are successful. So with math, we want to have more small group instruction within the classroom. That way, we can look at our math data and individually look at where students are struggling. And small group instruction can take place in the classroom to address those needs. Also, with helping us in math, we're using or we're involved in a partnership this year with SCMI. And with SCMI, teachers work in collaboration with each other to improve math instruction. Math teachers will also work with a math coach that is provided by SCMI to help improve instruction using math talks, Mars tasks, and engagement activities. Also with the Mars task, this allows teachers to gather data on their students and to improve their instructional practices. Also, we want to increase student involvement, I'm sorry, before and after-school study groups and homework help. We do have some teachers that offer before-school helps to our students who are struggling in math. Also, the first week of October, we will be starting our homework club where students can stay active and receive additional assistance in the area of math or reading or if they're struggling in any subjects, where they can come and get some more assistance from their teachers. Also, we want to increase student involvement in the goal setting process, realizing that our population is sixth through eighth grade. We want students to make sure that they're taking ownership and join their part in their education or receiving their academic education. And so we're going to work with our students in collaboration with our teachers to see what we need to do to improve our student scores. Also, we will do collaboration and data review through our professional learning communities. We have go-time in our schedules where our teachers can meet by grade level and also by content area, look at the strands in math that we need more help on and work together as a group to provide advanced instruction for all of our students.
And that's going to carry over to the reading as well. The last two bullets are the same. I actually walked in the classroom and the student had their individual goal on their desk. So this is where I am. This is where I need to be. These are the steps that I'm going to take. So that involving and getting students to take ownership of where they are as well in that process and they're setting those goals with their teachers individually. So those two are the same. Implementing, the implementation of cooperative learning, the Kegan models. I'm told that all the teachers have been trained, all the core teachers have been trained on the Kegan model and strategies, and they are implementing those as well. And then focusing on the math strands. We talked about our areas of weakness as well as our target, our areas of strength. And then early identification of intervention groups to address struggling students. From what I understand, last year, this process didn't start until perhaps second quarter. But this year, I guess in the summer, they were identified. And so the very beginning of the school year, from day one, students have been placed in those groups and that work is going forward. So we're looking forward to spending as much money as we're allowed to, recognizing some interventions, assessing what interventions are needed. It's all about the kids at Parker School and we are excited about this work. One of the things about being where we are is it gives us lots of opportunity and room to grow. And so that's what we're looking forward to. Still the same with culture, with fidelity. We've heard about the restorative justice practices. Our social workers have put together social-emotional learning lessons. And so some of those are guiding the talking circles. They can have them at any time, but they are scheduled to do them at least once a week in their, I'm sorry. In enrichment class time period. And then they can have them at any time, but they do have the social-emotional learning lessons to help guide those particular communications. And then to continue building strong relationships amongst stakeholders. I have a lot on my plate, but what I try to do every day is get in the cafeteria at each lunch period when I'm not at a meeting to speak to all the kids, right? When they're coming in in the morning as well as when they're going out. If I'm around, I'm trying to get in and help make sure that we are building a relationship between administration and staff, administration and teachers, I'm sorry, and students. And student to student, which is what the restorative justice piece is. But I do want to say, just to piggyback on Ms. Harrell, is that the Parker staff has been amazing. I don't know what the situation was. I've led five years away and never stepped foot in Parker School, but it has been amazing. The help from parents, the PTO was phenomenal. Met with me the other day. Ms. Fountain has done a wonderful job. And so I believe this is going to be a good marriage and we're going to continue to build upon the culture that she set so that we can excel with our students. And thank you so much for not having any questions. Guess where? Amberwell, where do you think?
I'll just skip this side.
So I'd say firstly, in my work, we have to be short, even in time. There seems to be a lot of focus. And I realize it was Parker Ridge because it's not the entire plan. As a principal, it's with me. I'm sharing this is short, you know, so not. But I have a child that's hard for me and I know that you have here. A lot of times to sort of assist the students that are struggling. My question is, are there plans in place to be able to challenge students who are not struggling? Particularly students who are in advanced classes that really aren't being challenged?
Yeah, I've definitely, and I've spoken to previous CalBees about the need for us to just require what we're doing to challenge students at the higher end or whatever we want to call it. It's not about giving it a label. We can call it whatever we want. We just want to make sure that we're meeting all of our students' needs. Right now at Parker, we know that there are issues, placement issues with students and students maybe feeling like, you know, I worked over the summer and I'm bored in my class, so now what? And right now, we are taking that on a case-by-case basis. I ask anyone to reach out to me. What I can say is that I'm trying to sit down and work with teachers to look at data and make sure that we're making informed decisions based on that, what's best for the kids so that it's not just, sure, you go here, you go here. We want to make sure that we're doing the best thing for kids and that we're basing the decisions that we make for placement based on what they really need, knowing that this year, as I mentioned at the previous meeting, we need to do some full-scale reassessment and reevaluating our policies around advanced classes, gifted, whatever we're going to call it. We know we're taking that on hold pause this year, but in the meantime, we want to make sure your students need their math. So we're taking it with my case.
Ms. Parker, I want, the presentation, you may be interested. It was, she did a presentation of what we were doing with the gifted program and possibly opportunities for parents. Or I can't remember.
Yeah, we've already got.
Okay, all right. Just want to give you that presentation.
I already looked her in.
All right.
She can't get off now.
And my question was with the math and the flipped classroom. And just moving forward, just talk about how much the teacher can use the flipped classroom. And for the parents that don't know, that's when the students just, they look at the classroom, I guess, instruction at home and then they come in class and they do the homework. And I thought that there was a little bit too much happening in that in the math class last year. So I just think that there needs to be some structure in terms of not allowing the teacher individually to decide how much flipped classroom she's going to do, but try to gauge that on what's happening with her students. Meaning that the student doing well with the flipped classroom or you need to do more instruction. So I want to make sure that moving forward, we look at that.
I think with that, that's part of our PLC meetings where an administrator will come in, talk to the teachers, see what's going on in the classroom, look at our data, and then make informed decisions. Is this working? Is this not working? Do we need to change? So we meet weekly to look at data, to look at assessments, to make sure that what we're doing is with the needs of all of our students. And if it's not working, then we come together to figure out what we can do to change it to make it work.
So given your short tenure so far, can you, who put the plan together?
The plan was put together before we came. So that was done in August, in this hour. But we're looking at the data that we have, that we have. And like we said, the plan is not static. We're going to continue to improve. So if we see some other areas that we need to address, we definitely will do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you very much. And on behalf of the board, Dr. Purcell, this is the first time in a while. At the board, we welcome you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Lester and our guests. You know who I am, but I would want to start off by saying I am a proud principal of Heather Hill Elementary and I believe in the greatness of Heather Hill, of our students, our parents, our school, and what we're going to achieve this year. So I just want to make clear that we believe in what we're going to do this year. Regardless of what the data shows, we are going to be great. Success, I really want to bring out the successes because we've handled a lot of challenges. So here are some of our successes. Our report growth, you were both math for reading. In math, from a rank of four to 18 points. And reading from 4.8 to 14.2 points. We were also realizing informational text is our strength as well as geometry. But what's not only here is our third through fifth grade met or achieved the expected RIT growth in both math and reading according to NWA EAA standards. So I just want to note that because it's not on the slideshow here. In reading, our first grade has 61.5% growth. Fourth grade, 62.8% growth. And fifth grade, 61.9% growth. In math, our first grade has 69.2% growth. Fourth grade, 60.5% growth. And in fifth grade, 61.9% growth. So we did achieve in those grade levels. Of course, we can hear a couple of other grade levels, which is where our growth is and where we got to make some changes. And there's some effective things to bring those scores up in those grade levels. So what's the data telling us? All right, we can look at data all day, but what is it telling us? And what are we going to do to change? So our GANs for this year, we got an improvement in area of literature. And in math, we got a proven area of measurement and data. So in literature, we need to address our students' ability to look at the various parts of literature and be able to answer in-depth questions about that literature. That's nonfiction text and fictional text. We know as students go up in their years that common course or Park assessment is going to challenge our students to be able to read and decipher more nonfictional text. And I talked about this with the PTO. And I think that's one of the things we want to focus on to make sure we get more nonfictional text in our students' hands. And so we want to make sure our students are able to do that. In math, we want to increase our, for measurement and data, we want to increase our students' understanding of the forms of measurement and data. But we also want to shift it to application, right? We can increase their understanding, but we have to give them the ability and the time to apply that skill to a specific context. We have to do the same in reading, but we have, seeing from our park scores and our NWA scores, math is a concern. And I think in order for us to grow in math, we're going to have to give that time for students to be able to apply. Now, in par, and so we're talking part of the first one of our GANs because we saw an increase in our reading mark scores by 2.1 percentage points. And in math, 1.7 point percentage points. Not great increases, but great enough for it to be a concern because we never want to go down, right? And so I want to make sure that this year, that this is one of our GANs and our focuses that we increase these mark scores so that we can, so we can show achievement. Now, we had a ton of students in that approach range, but all of those doesn't count, right? We know where we got to get, we know our kids are capable in Heather Hill to do great things and that's what we're going to push them to do for the school year. And so what is going to go by? All right, so what are our, what are our objectives? The first we want is make sure we put some tools, instructional tools in our kids' head. And so what are the instructional tools? The reason why we made that kind of a broad statement is because we want, we don't want to define tools versus programs, right? So we've got a couple of programs that we are going to break. We're going to bring in Fox and Hill Guide to Reading, our Guide to Reading integration to ensure that our students are getting that literature in their hands. And that is structuring our small, our small groups instruction to be tailored to the skills that students need in a particular area. For math, we want to bring the Reflex Math that is going to focus on make sure students have math fluency. So we're focused on that. But one of the biggest things, we talk about data a lot. We got to give our teachers in the building a chance to analyze data and then make actionable plans based on that data. So I instituted a data reflection sheet that's going to put up this here opposite of our data, our data reports, where teachers will look at that form of data, analyze, and make an instructional action plan for their, for their kids. And so we're going to make sure we're able to do that. We have the dates, teachers, first, their first example of this is coming soon. And what I'll do with this, I'll share, I'll share it back with the teams and then I'll take that data and then find and search for professional development and the areas of weakness our teaching will get that to grow in that area. We have to differentiate our independent centers based on some of our walkthroughs. It's an area of growth for us that our independent centers specifically focus on the needs and the skills of our kids. And I'm not trying to do the B.O.I.C. without a learning path or read a book, but that book we instructed to, to tailor needs. For culture, I want to start, for our culture piece, I want to start mentoring programs to give parents more volunteer opportunities. So we're gonna start a male mentoring program pretty soon. We also have started a group meeting message exchange with fathers, so that we can give fathers the opportunity to inform them of the various volunteer opportunities within our school. And there's a lot going on this month, I wanna build a culture, a culture of volunteering at our school is one of my goals. We started out doing satisfaction improvement surveys, so we're gonna keep that going on, making a lot of responses, but we're gonna keep pushing them out, so that we have the data that knows that our programs are effective, are working, and what we're willing to do to make changes. But we also wanna continue to develop our toward practices. We're working off of, we're making talking circles, but we wanna get to the point where we're doing peer evaluation, we're doing peer jurors, and we're doing those things, so there's professional development around it. But one of the key things that we're doing, and this is why you see breathing, math, and culture, we wanna combine this thing, we don't wanna have these separate pieces that are, we gotta attack this, this, and this. And so what I have, one goal for all three of these areas, and that's one of, and it's professional development. So what I, what I wanna do is create professional development based on a needs assessment, walkthrough data, and student achievement data. So, the assessment will run out tomorrow, we're gonna find out what to do, what are their weaknesses and strengths, and how can we take with that to our professional development? We'll triangulate that with the walkthrough data, with student achievement data, and we're gonna make a year-long professional development plan for Heather Hill, where each of our staff needs is structured. Teachers already know the concepts, we're already knowing topics, there are already speakers and presenters, and we're gonna, we're gonna look at that data, we're gonna rank it, and that's what our professional development fight should be. There's some more development on Thursday, development on Tuesday, we're gonna have it developed for the year. So teachers know specifically that we're meeting their needs, because when we meet the teacher's deficiencies, we're gonna increase our student achievement and they can have the skills in order to move our kids. I did forget one piece, I gotta thank my B L T, because without them, it wouldn't be possible. I got two members back here, but we work hours, looking at various forms of data, correcting data. And so without them, I couldn't come up with this plan, and without the new culture of our building, I think it would've been difficult, but everybody's up on board, and we're gonna let this happen for Heather Hill. We know we can be great, and we're gonna be great. So, any questions?
I'm inspired, thanks. It's John's dream, I drank the Kool-Aid, I wanna be a part of it. But having said that, you know, I love your idea of your satisfaction improvement surveys. Is that specifically for the families and the students, or does that also tie into teachers in terms of working with each other, or P L Cs and working with administration?
So we're actually gonna plaster our community, just teachers, parents, students, with surveys. The more survey data we can get, the more informed we can be about where we need to go. So you'll see teachers with satisfaction surveys, parents with satisfaction surveys. At the early event, they'll be satisfied surveying, we're currently from a group forum. Students will complete that survey, and we also wanna increase our student, student voice and choice. So we wanna do those things to make sure that everybody has a voice. And I'm thankful for the team I have, those are the families and the teachers, that everybody are on board, and our system will just hang.
And look forward to it, I think we have some other questions.
You actually asked my question about the satisfaction?
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I, I do know, um, that's why I'm deciding to decide, because we did, like, our, we did not make a package. Um, do you have specific targets that you're looking, because they'll get on the map and we, and we have those right? We're not great, right? So is there a place that you're looking to, for all of the students?
So my number is high, and when I first met my data team, I told them, the number up here, you don't wanna hear, right? I'm a dreamer, and I really may be a master, I'm a dreamer. But what we did was, we took our park data, and we saw how many students were approaching, and realized that if we could just move half of those students, we could be up almost fifty percent for efficiency in math, just half of the students that were approaching. And so when we looked at our data, that's how we looked at our data, and made our goal for maybe our achievement. So, our goal is around forty-seven percent for both, I believe, both fifty percent for math, reading, and, math, I'm sorry, park, you said, math, or park reading and math.
Don't leave, the best ones have to come.
Keith, and new principals, good luck, you're doing a great job. Just wanna let you know, we're here to support you as well, and our colleagues. So at Serena Hills, I'm gonna tell you about some of those kids that have those horrific labels. I'm gonna tell you about the diversity that it takes to move a team. I'm here to tell you that at Serena, there's no hidden agenda. We have the most diversified population in the district. Currently, we have thirty-one students with I V Ps, and we have fifty-nine students that are English language learners. I'm gonna tell you, and all of you out here, I know are smart enough, if you would've watched that presentation by Clay Grant, you would've seen Serena's scores at the top of the list. And I'm gonna bring that out right now, because that takes an incredible amount of team efforts, and dedication, and commitment to excellence, to move those kind of numbers. Every student is exposed to the curriculum, whether it's at both ends of the continuum. It is our job, and I wanna thank you for your comments, because it takes everyone to look at this audience, and this audience to say, we all are changelings. We need to come together to the things that end it us, and not the things that stop us. And I'm gonna be forthcoming in saying that we are proud of the work that we've done at Serena. So I'm gonna show you what kids can do, those kids that have horrific labels, right, Ms. Latman? Let's show them right here, so let me show you what this diversified group at Serena has done. In the area of math at Serena Hills, we've increased our spring to spring RIT scores for all grade levels with a range of eleven point oh to thirty-one points. Our kindergarten ninety-three percent, our first grade eighty-four percent, this is math, second grade eighty-five percent, third grade eighty-five percent, fourth grade eighty-five percent, fifth grade sixty-two percent. In the area of reading at Serena Hills, we've increased our spring to spring RIT scores for all grade levels with a range of eight point oh to twenty-four points. Our reading growth on the math screen was kindergarten eighty-two percent, first grade seventy-seven percent, second grade eighty percent, third grade seventy-nine percent, fourth grade eighty-nine, I'm sorry, third grade seventy-nine percent, fourth grade eighty-nine percent, and fifth grade sixty-seven. According to the math scores of the twenty-fifteen norms, every grade level at Serena in reading and math exceeded the end of the year mean RITS. That's incredible, and we're proud of that. Our preliminary park scores in twenty-fifteen for E L A, we were at thirty-eight percent met and exceeded. For twenty-sixteen, E L A, we were at thirty-nine, which, in met and exceeded, which is a one percent growth. In twenty-fifteen for math, for park, we were twenty-six percent met and exceeded. Twenty-sixteen, thirty-nine met and exceeded with thirteen percent growth. Spring, I wanna talk a little bit here about our tiers, our M T S S tiers. So the tier, at, tier one goal is eighty percent. At Serena, we had seventy-five percent of kids at tier. Tier two goal is fifteen percent, that's the goal. At Serena, we currently have nineteen percent of kids at tier two. At tier three, which is the kids who usually need the most support, the goal is five percent. At Serena, we have six percent. Spring, twenty-sixteen, our math tiers, the tier one goal again is the same, eighty percent. At Serena, we have eighty-one percent. And tier two, the goal is fifteen again, Serena is right there at fifteen percent. And then tier three, the kids who need the most support, five percent is the goal, Serena is at four percent. So I would like to say, our goal here in the tiers is to stop that revolving door syndrome. Once those kids get out of a tier, we don't wanna see them go back into a tier. So our goal is to constantly look and progress monitor the interventions. The success at Serena, and I'll say this over again, is the measurable impact of the interventions on student achievements. We watch that very closely. We earmark the kids right away that are at risk in tier three, and say, what do they need? Our goal for all kids is to give them what they need, but we specifically hone in and watch to see that we can get those kids from tier three down to tier two, and those kids in tier two down to tier one. That's our goal. I once again wanna say that our committed staff at Serena should be commended for their outstanding efforts with all students. I am really honored to be counted amongst our number. This is an amazing team, it is a hardworking team, it is a team that goes above and beyond the call of duty to really uphold down on their profession, but their commitment to every stakeholder that we serve. Our diversity is our strength, because it really is, and our stakeholders, you know, certainly play an important role in student achieving. We couldn't do without our parents. We have a huge bilingual parental group that we do customize training for. We have lots of interpreters that come in, and so really, we do have to go above and beyond to meet our needs. It looks very different sometimes at Serena, but I gotta tell you, you know there's measurable impact because the proof is there. Our greatest area of need, thank you, Kathy. Our goal is to increase student performance in the area of operations and algebra thinking. So by the end of the school year, we would like eighty-five percent of our students to meet and exceed their growth expectations on the math. In reading, we'd like to increase vocabulary skills, which will increase overall reading performance. So by the end of the year, we are looking at eight percent of our students that will need to receive their growth expectations on the math. Our five essentials, based on that data, we are building teacher-to-teacher relationships in hopes that it'll improve our culture and climate, and we've had significant growth in that area over the last two years. Our action plan? Yeah, major? Provide shared leadership activities to refine professional practices in team morale. It is about collegial honor. It is about not one person having the expertise, but how all of us come together to share that. It's my job as a leader to create those vehicles, so that we can have authentic dialogue, and then we can look at our data, we can embrace our data, and then we can put action plans around it in a collegial format. We implement the Fontas and Penelope, because I think it is one of the best research shows that. We've leveled literacy, we use it as a tier three. Thank you, Mrs. Latman, for coming in and listening to my explanation and my rationale, and Mrs. Crawford as well, because I wanted to move into a tier two this year, because I wanna have the most measurable impact, to be proactive at tier two to stop that, those kids who go from tier two to tier three. Yes, we have to be careful, and I'll make sure I'll say this to Mrs. Crawford, that it doesn't creep into our tier one, our up core, because it truly is a tier two and tier three intervention. But we have moved that this year, based on our data, we were not seeing much growth with bright group intervention, we were stagnant, and we made a change. Let's see here, we wanna continue to use best practices, that's our D D I, those are reading strategies, our project-based learning, our CAGEN, which is our cooperative learning, our D O K levels, our data analysis, authentic dialogue, I'm really a leader, we're not stats quoting, we really push authentic dialogue into professional learning communities. They have to look, we do smart agendas, so that they have a pre-plan before they get in there. There's a high accountability for everything that we do. We look at articulation collaborations that happen, and then all of those things help us drive instructional practices. We focus on small guided group, our Richmond groups, all of you know Mrs. Burke, who was a finalist at Golden Apple. She has now, we have taken a model, and Mrs. Burke sees ninety-one students. So not only our ACE teacher, but she also, so to those kids are the rebel kids that we wanna push. So if those kids are four or five percentage points away from being pushed to the higher end of the continuum, we're giving them really accelerated types of project-based learning. We're focusing on our bug kids at both ends of the continuum. We utilize supplemental park resources to improve our stamina, we looked at that as well. Those are two different types of tests, the math and the park. What it really can kinda see, it has an effect on us, is that the reading passages in the park are lengthy, and sometimes it is very hard for some of our challenged readers, so we're working on stamina there. And then we're monitoring accountability at all levels to support student achievement. We have accountability and measurements across the board to continuously, you know, use a wide lens to look at what needs improvement, so that we can tweak it as the year goes on. Thank you to the board for your continued support, because we certainly couldn't do without you. Thank you for your voices, thank you, Dr. Duster, for your leadership, and certainly to my colleagues, because if we didn't have the opportunity to, you know, network and collaborate, where would we be, because we don't work in isolation. Thank you very much.
I have to commend you guys, you guys are out in the face of the unfavorable situation, which I believe you're showing. My question, I remember this, I was a child when you were at Heather Hill, and I know the turnaround is down. But, you know, when we were looking at Mr. Verin's presentation, it was pretty clear that certain areas, Serena is standing above everyone else. And I guess, I will pose a question, in the face of that, and maybe you still are digesting the data, but what is being done to replicate this across the district? There are some best practices that I'm sure are there. And so, in terms of training, in terms of replicating what you guys are doing inside your building, I think, you know, all the schools probably should, should, you know, have that benefit to draw. Congrats, but it is, I would just hope the board and leadership is, you know, just kinda, they came to incorporate that, to create your picture.
Thank you so much. I don't think we do anything above and beyond, in the sense, it's like any sport, we play the fundamentals well, we win games. And I think that for our team, we went out and said, you know what? We're gonna use the best practices, we're gonna do it well, we're gonna implement with fidelity, and we're gonna own our data. If we have to tweak it, we have to constantly have dialogue around it. But I will tell you this, every student that walks into Serena Hills is greeted as a great place to be. And ninety-nine percent of the game is how we really improve our relationships about our culture and climate, and know that learning can be a great place, and kids know that, and they can feel it. If they can, you can reach them, you can reach them. Come on, Pat, let me help you. Hard act to follow, but you saved me. Pat is one of my other group, is our mentor, just so you know what I'm saying. Pat is my mentor, so I have to say that a lot of our best practices and things that have come along is the focus and the creative, has helped us in many ways. So thank you, Dan, for all your hard work.
Thank you. Members of the Board of Education, thank you for having me tonight for this awesome, wonderful, unique plan. I have three of my staff, and the first two, I tried to send them home, I sent them probably six text messages saying, please go home, we didn't see you tomorrow, but they chose to stay, so I wanna recognize them. They're a part of our B L T team.
Yay!
Successes? Blossom Hills has a variety of successes, and I wanted to highlight all of them. When you look at our spring to spring RIT scores in the area of math, you can see that we had a range of increase of eight point two to twenty-three point one percent. Geometry is our strength in every single grade level. In the area of reading, our RIT scores range from seven point two to nineteen point one percent growth. So that is good, that shows us that our students are proficient in taking the math test. For five essentials, we were very pleased, last year we were considered to be partially, a partially organized school. This year, we have, from last school year actually, we were well organized for improvement. That is the highest level that you can attain at this state level. And what that really tells you is that our climate is such, that we are able to foster change, we are able to work together, look at our data, pull our sleeves up, even when we have tough times, we had a tough situation in the winter, we didn't see that our park score, our math scores were the way that we wanted them to roll. And so I told the staff, let's rip our wounds, and take it, and move forward, and that's exactly what they did. So I thank them for that. When we look at our park scores, I'm actually pretty pleased with these. In E L A, for this year, we're at fifty point eight percent of our students that are exceeded. That is a twelve point two percent increase over last school year. In math, we're at fifty-six point nine percent of our students that are exceeded. That's a fourteen point nine percent increase over last year. So as I said, we have a variety of successes at Blossom Hills. With all those successes, we still know that there's areas for growth. So our GAN is, we want to improve our, improve our overall growth on the math test in all areas. We had a range that was in reading of fifty-seven percent to seventy-two percent, and in math, we ran from sixty-three percent growth to eighty-eight percent growth. We're seeing that vocabulary is really impacting us across every area of the curriculum and every grade level. And when we look at vocabulary, it's not just our tier two or tier three words, it's really our tier one words, those basic words that are impacting. The tier two words are the high-frequency words, and then the tier three words are the constant specific words. And all of those are having an impact, if they can't understand vocabulary, they're just not able to understand how to comprehend and use the proper language they need to use. In math, we want to focus on operations and algebra thinking, so that's analyzing, problem solving. We're very proud of parent participation, but I truly believe, and we truly believe as a team, that it's the homeschool connection that gets us to where we need to be, and that is something that we continuously focus on. Last week, we had our very first brag night, and the parents didn't wanna leave, the students didn't wanna leave. The survey results, we had a hundred people actually took the survey, and all of our scores were at the highest level, and the results were four point five to five point oh. So we know that we wanna continue that, because the more we can get them into our schools, we know the better that they're going to do. We have the STEM night coming up, our events that we have every year would be family reading night, family gaming night, and we also have intervention convention, and that's the night where we highlight our interventions at both levels. So our ACE interventions are presented, as well as our interventions for the year three students. We want to make sure that we increase the rigor, the differentiation, in everything that we do. So our action plan, you will see that we wanna start with faculty farming using our CAGEN strategies. We noticed that differentiation is the biggest thing that we needed to focus on. And what we see is that when the students, when the teachers and the guidance And what we see is that when the students are, when the teachers are in the diner, we're getting the diet. That means that students are rotating in their centers. And when they're rotating in their centers, we realize that our central work was not rigorous enough or was differentiated enough. So therefore, I purchased the Carol Thompson books and the Debbie Diller books for all of our grade level teachers to try and increase the rigor and the differentiation in those centers. And we know that if we can do that, that's going to help our students a lot. So what we'll see is that a student will now go to the center and instead of there being just one thing where every student should do, there'll be different, three different grade levels, three different levels for them. And they can actually get assigned to work that packs more rigor and more differentiation based on their needs. One of the things that we focused on was student choice and student voice. That actually came out of the strategic plan, I was a part of that. And that was something that the parents really talked about a lot. And so we started researching that and what we saw is that based on the research, it says when students have choice and voice in what they do, they perform better. So what I've asked the teachers to do is now develop rubers. And then once they develop a ruber, let the child decide how they want to begin their learning. Do they want to do a song, do they want to do a dance, do they want to do an I-We? Doesn't matter, as long as they're meeting the standards and following the ruber and getting a score, they should be able to do it because then they'll have more engagement and they'll help higher achievement. We started math talks last year, we were actually a part of the SPMI group. And it ended up that we were actually a little bit ahead of the SPMI group because we had started and the teachers were going to talk about that, like the math talks and the more asked. We didn't totally implement with fidelity last year, so we're asking this year that we put more fidelity into what we're doing. And as you saw from our scores, our math scores at Blossom Hills are actually our highest scores, we know that's working. Again, we want to focus on the rigor, the differentiation, and we believe that that's going to be positive for us. Our culture is very positive at Blossom Hills, but because of the restorative practices, we are using talking circles and we also implemented what we call the CARE room. The CARE room stands for creating a respectful environment. We noticed that we only had forty-seven offices for referrals last year, which is a few years ago. So when we looked at the data, what we noticed was that most of them preferred physical aggression, a little pushing, or for respect. And so the kids are able at during the lunch period to go to the CARE room, they're referred. So if they had disrespect, if they go there, we do some tools with them. And they're able to role-play, open the pool tools, and figure out what respect should look like. Sometimes you have to do respect because what's respectful in the home setting may not be respectful in the late considerate. So that's something that we see is having positive outcomes so far. We haven't had any of the others. Any questions? And as I always say, everyone knows that life is great at Blossom Hills.
Well, thank you for your questions, Dr. Green. Again, very impressive, I will let you roll and post comments.
Alright, thank you.
If there's no further questions related to the school improvement, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the Title I presentation with Dr. Duster.
Alright, there's been a lot of question on the Title I. I've done a lot of research over the last couple weeks since this, this has come up. And I'm going to show the Board of Education what the information that we have today. So we'll go to the next one. I want to tell a little bit about Title I and the challenges that we have in our school district. I've been to Title I conferences before and I listened to presentations from people that school districts are there. And the school districts, they don't have a lot of money. And what they do is they roll account on the Title I funding. With our school district, we are not a title district. We have four of our five schools that are Title Ones, pardon, that are Title I and they're whole school. We did that a couple weeks ago, we went, or a couple years ago, we went through. And there's a determination factor of forty percent or higher, there's a lot of other things as well. But that would help us in regards to distributing the money to our students and our staff in regards to student achievement. So the Blossom School District, what we do is we have No Child Left Behind grants that are changing to ESSA. And we're going through, looking at the rules and the regs at this point. But we have Title I, that is the low income. We have Title II, that's professional development. And Title III is ELL. And these grants, what we do is we apply for them every year through our school district and we're afforded money. This right here for Title I, last school year, we reported about five hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars. Our funds are distributed after every quarterly report. This occurs four to five times per year. For some school districts, it happens every month because they need the money to continue to go because you cannot receive your money until you give an expense report. Specifically, Title I is money designated to schools that qualify under law based on low income percentages. Once a school is deemed a Title I building, they're labeled as either target assistance or school-wide assistance. I don't think we have the right PowerPoint up here. It's where the definitions come from. So I'll continue, we'll see where we are with this. Alright, Title I funds. The Title I funds are restricted. The No Child Left Behind funds must only be used to supplement, means to add to. Any state or local funds used to provide services, staff, programs, or materials, in other words, No Child Left Behind grant funds cannot be used to pay for things that would otherwise be paid by state or local funds. This is one of the concerns that we have in our school district. For example, if we're going to purchase textbooks, we cannot purchase textbooks for Western Avenue of the same series. Okay, it has to be supplemental in types of materials. Next one, Title I funds may not be used for required by law, such as response to interventions. Whatever required or mandated by law cannot be used. Next, supported last school year. So for example, summer school. Summer school, we spend about seventy-five thousand dollars a year and that has been funded by local funds. We cannot pay for that out of Title I funding. And the next provides to everyone, example, if the district provides books to all children as part of an after-school reading program, it would be sub, supplanting. If the district uses No Child Left Behind funds to pay for the books provided to Title I students, but uses state mobile funds to buy books, cannot Title I students. So those are the challenges that we run into. Next. So there is a carryover provision and fifteen percent, that was brought up before, in regards to can we have a carryover? Each year, fifteen percent of the total extended, or the total allotment from the year before is given. There's also waiver, the waiver one time every three years. The one-time waiver, we, this year, after checking on this, we didn't know we had as much money as we thought we had. So this five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, we expended four hundred fourteen thousand of it. So we had, we did not expend a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. The waiver, after checking on it, there was no waiver that was sent. As soon as I found this out, I called ISPE and we're working with them. On the first account that the woman was talking about earlier, it shows that there is a carryover of the hundred sixty-two thousand forty-six dollars. We are assuming that that money has been carried over, so we're waiting to hear, yes?
So I have a few questions before I even move on with this slide. The first question is, how did you not know that you had sixty-two thousand dollars more than before? We'd seen the budget twice, the hundred thousand dollar number came to us twice. So how is it that you did not know that you had sixty-two thousand? That's question number one. Question number two is, I'm not clear on, do we have a waiver? Do we need a waiver? Is there certainty that the hundred sixty-two thousand dollars is still available?
Okay, answer your question. Did we know about the sixty-two thousand dollars? The hundred thousand dollars was approximate, which was stated at budget hearing, or a budget meeting. In addition to that, with our final expenditure, after looking through, we found out that we had another hundred sixty, another sixty-two thousand dollars. That's what we found out at our last expenditure count. In regards to the waiver, there was not a waiver that was submitted to, no one to say Board of Education. So would we know why?
Why was there not a waiver? And if he had submitted a waiver, when would that have been due?
That is what we're still checking on in regards to ISPE. We're not hundred percent sure on that, we think it may have been after the extension of our Title I grant.
So we have no idea when the waiver was due. So is there certainty that we actually have a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars available to us?
It's either going to be a hundred sixty-two or it's going to be fifteen percent of five hundred seventy-three, or seven five thousand.
So that means we could in essence lose money?
That's right.
That, that?
That's how I'm telling.
It's, I don't know, that's levy plus levy in the accurate word to describe how I'm feeling about the fact that we could potentially, which sounds like it's highly likely, that we will lose funds. We will have to give funds back to the federal government in a district where we have four of our five schools, our Title I schools. We have a district where over forty percent of our students are low income. We can't find any way to spend these funds?
I might move on, so I can show you.
Is there a budget?
There's information in there, is there a budget moving forward, that's what we're creating. The next one here, the history of our district is to write the same resources to each building regardless of the building. Our Title I buildings are not in shortage. They receive the same amount of resources that are Title I. I wanted to make that point because it is important to all the parents that are out here. When we budget, all of our schools are budgeted the same. We give them, you know, per pupil capital, we give them the money so that our kids can be successful. We understand that they need, that those dollar amounts, that is what we work through. So what we have done on addition to some of those things, we brought this to the Board of Education in the past, we've had these discussions. But there's been additional Title I aides that have been added to our four buildings to assist. And then it's been the philosophy, when you hear all these things, with these great principals have been saying about DOK and what they've been saying about differentiation and instruction and all the other PVs, what we've done is we've taken the monies from the Title I and the Title II funds because the Title II can address Western. And by using both of those funds, we are able to give professional development to our staff so that we can continue to move ahead. There's been a lot of things that have taken place over the last five years in regards to shifts and changes. So that is what we have done with the dollars thus far. That has been the direction of how the district has gone. If that is going to change, which I'm getting a sense from at least you, that I would like to see some of that.
I'd like to see the money spent. This is now, this is now the third time where I have come to the meeting expecting there to be a budget to show how you plan to exhaust the rest of the funds. The fact that I, we, whether we look at park data, whether we look at math data, there are consistent trends that speak to the need to address low-income students in this area. So I'm just not, it doesn't sit well with me that we may potentially have to return, we may lose funds that are specifically earmarked for students who need them. I cannot, I, I can do a survey of ten superintendents right now that could give me examples of how to spend those funds. Please tell me how engaged your principals have been in how we use these funds. Please describe whether or not the need among low-income students are the same in each of these buildings as to justify why we're giving the exact same allotment for each of these schools. I don't see Title I in any of the SIP. What role has the, have the principals played in spending this money?
Sure. Continue. With this right here, expended money, there was four hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars that we expended. We did not expend that much money. After looking at the budget, all money was accounted for in the Title I, is where we could spend it. This one right here, Parker Junior High, those were for math interventions. The thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars was supposed to go to math interventions. That was supposed to go to the planning for Parker. That did not happen. And this was the remainder. Reclaiming youth, that is for some of our restorative justice practices and training that we were going to take place or take part in last year. There were a couple of trainings that were canceled. We're ending up taking some of that money and coming into the fall to address that. CAGEN, we have forty-seven thousand dollars sitting on the table. We were going to go into classrooms last year and we're going to take some teachers out and assist with that. In addition, we had two more days planned for the summer and we did not do that because of the concerns with some teachers being on the classrooms. We have a consultant, this consultant right here is Pat Pitt, who's working in regards to writing. And with the curriculum, at the junior high level, we did not get as far as we thought we were going to get on that. And then CEC, we talked about the ten thousand, five hundred, or five hundred forty-four dollars that dealt with our para etc., our, our para regulations and our SLO growth model and more training for our teachers. So we'll go back to that, please. So this dollar amount right here, how much of our principals were in charge of this? Well, there was not a lot that went into that because all of the money was going for PV. This money that is remaining right here, we have gone out to our principals. They have given us some suggestions or they're at least meeting with their department chairs at this time. And this remaining money here, we are going to write that out into the grant. We're going to put that in there and we are going to provide whatever resources that our schools need to carry on for the rest of this year. We're going to have those discussions and we will go ahead and address that. Next year, we'll have a different plan coming forward with the Board of Education in regards to resources and how we address those. Each school does not receive the same amount of money. Each school gets a certain percentage of money in regards to the Title I funds that are allotted to it. For example, with this rollover, I believe that Parker is sending around seventy thousand dollars that we have to give to Parker that will purchase different types of materials. I think at Serena Hills, there's like forty thousand dollars. And then with less kids at Heather, it'd be a little bit less money. So it's not just a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, we spread it out by four.
So you speak as if we're getting this rolled over, but you're, but you actually are not certain that we are getting the hundred sixty-two?
I am not a hundred percent sure, certain of that. We have looked at different school districts, they've rolled over everything. Was it last year, Miss Lovello, where the rollover took place? We believe that some of the school districts we looked at were not.
It would appear that no one's putting in waivers and full amounts are carrying over. So at this point in time, the money is allocated for us to write and spend within the application process, when you say for that?
And is that because it just hasn't caught up to us? I, I mean, okay, so.
It appears to be a practice across, I want the prisons, we may act quite a few school districts and it looks like that's been.
So, so we're going off of the assumption that we have a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to roll over. And just so that I understand, so to date, the building principals actually have not played a, have not been heavily engaged on what Title I funds should, how they should be spent.
That is true.
So the, so some dollar amount has been allocated to each of the schools, I'm not quite sure based on, on what. So I'm just, I'm just, I'm held back a little, I'm exhausted actually at this point. Please go ahead and continue.
I just want to, I'm going to continue. Can we find out before or at our next meeting whether or not this question has been answered? Do we have a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars and forty, a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, forty-six?
Dollars?
Whatever, I'm tired too. Whatever, I'm tired too. Do we, we need to know? And can, by the next meeting, we have an answer to that, a solid answer as to whether, so we're not guessing, we're not looking at what's been happening, that we have a solid answer as to whether we have this meeting? Is that something that can be had?
As soon as ISBD gets back to us, we should have an answer. That's what we're waiting for.
And so, I'm sorry, so are you going to show us the budget? Because it's, it's been a month since I asked for this budget. And, over the past four weeks, you've had a significant amount of time to talk to building principals, think about this one-sixty-two. So you're showing us what you have spent the funds on the four-fourteen, but I'm still not hearing a plan for the one-sixty-two.
And I'm showing you what we spent the one-fourteen on. I'm showing you, these are the things that were not spent last year.
And those things will equal the one-sixty-two?
If they do not equal a hundred percent, there's some other areas. So, this dollar amount for the big areas, the five big categories that money wasn't spent, I'm bringing that to the Board of Education. This money right here for the one-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, what we are going to do is we are going, we already have a grant ready for this year, for what we need, the needs that are there. This additional money is going to be split up of the staff, the staff of the schools, and they are going to be able to develop a plan and give it to us, and what they want to spend their dollars on. And I'm, I'm already hearing Contraspanal, I'm hearing different things with restorative justice, et cetera. So that is, that will be their money to spend. That has not been our practice in the past. We've utilized this money for PV instead of local money.
So we've never had a waiver, we've always exhausted a hundred percent of the funds allocated to ask under Title I?
No, we, we never have. I think last year, we were over the fifteen percent, I think. And then usually it was, it would be close, or even a fifty percent range.
The money can be used to improve test boards, since all five schools need work.
Money can be used to...
Serena Hills has improved greatly. We know that there has been some improvement, but can the money be used to improve, to help improve test boards, to do whatever needs to cope, whatever can be used in all five schools, since we're having an air health issue in that area?
Money can be used to purchase services, people, et cetera. So one thing we've not done in the past is hire teachers, certified staff on Title I money, because TRS, when you do that, you end up paying about thirty-six percent for TRS on that. So when you, we buy, buy, when we hire non-certified people, it's our AICAMAP, for example, it's, we don't have to pay that on IRRM. So those are things that we're looking at. But, it, for example, we give resources to our schools, so every one of our Title schools except for Parker has two reading specialists. So Parker, we have one up there this year, and to make sure that we're even with the rest of the school district, we have to hire another reading specialist local funds next year. Then, we can hire the next reading specialist with Title money, because it has to be above what the district offers for supplies for the school district. Here's another example, our instructional coaches, we want to bring them in. Our instructional coaches will have to hire, if we put one full-time at the junior high next year, that's on the district's dollar. Anyone above that is on Title I levels. And, when you ask about different things, there's some after-school programs on my last slide that we're looking at. We can look at like Silvett, for example. We are going to be looking at those types of things to see if there's any assistance that they can give to our Title I schools as well. But, we can buy hundreds of different types of intervention, so we need to make sure we know which ones work. Okay? Next slide, please. So, there's that fifteen percent, it is a guaranteed carryover, Title I restrictions present a challenge to our school district due to established programs, but I've talked about some of those already. Waiver for the remaining dollar amount, a waiver was not submitted by the district to ISBD. We are working with ISBD, and the waiver request for approval at this point. Last year, ISBD was out giving predations, as their experts were dealing with that. We found out last Friday that the carryover was placed indoor in FRS. We are assuming that that has taken place. We've looked at other school districts that are like ours, and we saw that their carryover was given as well.
Wait, I'm sorry, you said you, you said you saw that our carryover was what? Can you repeat that statement?
Their carryover was put on FRS. I'm only going to say...
It's also in the grant.
And it's also in the grant. Okay, next, please. So, moving forward, what are we going to do? Utilization of Title I funds. We will have a different outlook on how we spend these monies. We can spend this money very easily. This money, we can spend it on staff, and we can, we can spend it on after-school programs. That will take the money down very quickly, as well as providing more resources. That is what we've not done, but we can do that. Those are things we're looking at, and we have discussions with our administrative staff. Next one, I will be managing this grant with our Title I director and our business partner. Monitoring checklist, that'll take place on a monthly basis. It'll be an agenda topic at our administrative meetings, we'll be talking to our principals about what their part is. It will be talking to our curriculum director on how she is spending the money down. Possibly add more classified, or certify classified staff in Title I buildings in the area of math and reading. We're already talking right now with taking some of the money from Parker and, and bringing in some math coaches, because we know that we have a concern in math at Parker. And that is something that we can use to assist for this year. Create a after-school program, I discussed that a little bit, and then amend the sixteen-seventeen grant for a carryover waiver money, providing more dollars for supplementary materials for our Title I schools, building leadership, and Director of Learning will work on that. The last one I want you to see, though, is this, intend to spend all allocated funds. That's our intent, but there's a good chance we're not going to spend all of our carryover lines. And the best way I can say that is, for example, if you are, are selling stocks, or you're buying stocks, you maybe want to sell a thousand dollars, but the dollar amount's over that for the number of shares, and you don't have that spending as much as you thought you were going to spend, you have someone on the table. That is an example of a given carryover. When we looked at FRS, Fran and I took a lot of time with end of districts. There's districts that have leave of money on the table, not right or wrong, it's just restricted money, and it's difficult to spend.
Yeah, it's more, it's actually just creative after-school pieces. I know we've been having that conversation before, it continues, about since this holiday was pushed up, Parker gets out at two-thirty-three, which leaves the kids roaming the library, you know, and the requests come in a quiet bit for widely available or structured after-school programs, since Parker is one of the schools. That's a significant way, I figured we could spend some money, so I don't know if there's a, a plan in place for the, really sure a place to do that, because the kids really do need somewhere to go after school besides the library as their playbook. And it's, and it calls, I think it would be a lot of benefit to us, to the community, you know, well, support it to children, I mean, the kid does something to do, and I just think that you would get a lot of support for that, and it's kind of one of those easy wins, there's a need, we can actually do that, because you said after-school, you're right, the kids factor, their programs, and...
A couple of things, there's a, we have tutoring, that, that'll start at junior high. So the districts came for tutoring already. So we have to be careful in what Title I program we would bring in, because it can't be tutoring, because Western Avenue is tutoring. So we're unable to do that there.
So the, and again, I'm not, again, I'm not going to step on the downpour, please let me back just from my, I just moved my hat around.
You're saying get more...
I'm saying that there's so many creative ways to get the, to get the kids involved in, in, in like, people, give them a choice, give them input, give them anything to give them a gate for the school, sometimes outside of tutoring can really, you know, stuff that you're doing. So I, I'm just looking at that wonderful lineup, they are annoyed that we have a need, we have a fund, we have an opportunity, that gives me a wonderful need of...
And those are discussions we began. Answer your question about the budget. Budget is set already for what we've already spent this carryover money, we are going to be talking about that, trying to have a plan so that we can do that in the state.
So, and, and thank you for how, you know, describing how many plan initiatives there are going to be forward. I mean, I think, I just want to go on record that the whole budget thing, I've been asking that now for the past few meetings. And quite honestly, two meetings ago, or three meetings ago, had I not asked Mr. Bell to go back to the slide and show the hundred thousand dollars not being used, we wouldn't be having this discussion today. So I don't want to lose the fact that, that there's one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars that we could over-doubt that, all the fifteen percent, that we will probably have to give back, or we do not have access to.
I don't know that.
We don't know that, but we don't know, we don't know either way. My point is, is that, this is failure, this is failure to me, to a huge percentage of our students. In fact, you say, we can't, we can't, it's hard to spend money, we can't figure out how to spend the money. You have fabulous principals over here, who I am certain could have helped you figure out months ago, how to spend this money. So, I, I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of the fact that although we're moving forward, and we're, you're going to show us the budget, and all this inclusive planning that's taking place, but the reality is that there's still a high possibility that we might have to give funds back, and that represents failure to over forty percent of the students in this district. I don't really care how it's been. This ties directly back to all of the charts Dr. Graham has shown us, it ties back to the PAR data that the SIP plans show. There is a huge need to address the service needs of these particular students, and so I don't want you to, I don't want people to think that this isn't a bigger issue than what it is. I appreciate your moving forward piece, but I just want to recognize the fact that, to me, I, I see the one-sixty-two being lost as failure to the district.
I appreciate your...
Any other questions, Laura?
I don't have any questions. Actually, I guess just one point to clarify, what is the potential loss that we're going to have, in terms of eighty thousand dollars?
Eighty-six thousand is the...
Right, seventy to ninety-five, okay.
That's shameful. I mean, we just finished talking about what a deficit we are in because of our poor, low-income English learners, but we may lose eighty thousand dollars if not to support it. That's failure to me. Shame, 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 shame on this district. This has been the most exhausting board meeting out of experience over the past year. We've gone from restorative justice, so we, we brought restorative justice, to looking at students in very deficit position, to now losing funds that can support them. This has been a really great thing. I mean, I really hope we can find a way to end on a better note, but many of these things just do not sit well with me, and I'm certain they do not sit well with members of the community. This is really, I really, really hope that going forward, we pay closer attention to the students who really, really, really need us. I appreciate the principals, and especially, especially Serena Hills, celebrating the diversity, the thing that I heard you say, all of you said wonderful things that resonate, but the thing that I heard you say was that, "I own my data." That's a huge, very profound statement. And as a district CEO, you need to own our data as well. You need to appreciate the diversity of all of our students. Shame on you, again, for that first slide and that last slide, because you approved it. And kudos to you for moving this to the end, or wherever you had it in the agenda, because we're exhausted at this point of talking about Title I. So, most of the audience has gone, I'm sure they would have had as lovely comments towards this as they have into anything else, but we have to move the discussion to a more positive place, and really, really, really focus on all of our students. I don't feel any debt.
Okay.
So, positive though, Mr. President, is it just, I don't know, the two discussions that are coming up, that they might take time, if there's that. Is this something that I, I'm missing, is critical?
I'm going to suggest that the two, the last two items, there is one discussion that they would take, think we can do pretty good. And then come back up, and we can, and you're, we'll try to be as succinct as possible. So with that, everyone okay with the...
Okay, yes.
So, we'll leave those to Nikki and Tony again. I will empty the motion to go into the second session, discuss matters of personnel. You already addressed the other part, five ILCS, one-twenty slash two C one. This is Harold's first, second, we have Satakebe, just on favor say aye. Both folks remain. I have it, we'll be back.